The Executive Order 2020-18 issued by Governor Pritzker. The meeting will be held via video conference, telephonically through the WebEx Events Platform. Will County Board members will be attending the meeting remotely and the general public is strongly encouraged to do the same. The public is invited to comment or pose a question by email at publiccomment@willcountyillinois.com. At the public comments portion of the meeting, the emails will be read into the record. Please go to www.willcountyboard.com/meetings for a link to attend the meeting via WebEx. Can I have a roll call, please?
Cowan. Here. Ferry.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Eustace.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Toominalo.
Here.
Tyson.
Here.
Van Dyne. And you also have President Frizzalone. You have a quorum, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Annette Parker, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Wasn't the first pledge good enough?
I'm good, ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its laws for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Annette. Before we get started with the agenda, as many of you may have heard, it is with my deepest sympathy to let you know that we lost a great man yesterday, our county executive Larry Walsh. He was a man who was well-respected not only locally, at the state level, but also nationally. Larry sacrificed his personal life for over forty years to serve the people of Elwood, Will County, and the state of Illinois. I want to personally thank him for his leadership, his guidance, open arms, and especially his friendship. Larry Walsh Senior, you will be missed, my friend. Can I ask all of you to please stand and give Larry a moment of silence? Thank you so much. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of March 5th, 2020?
Motion, Ferry.
Second, Toominalo.
Cowan. Ferry.
Yes.
Gould. Don, are you there for a phone vote? Thank you. Harris. Eustace.
Yes.
Eustace. Next one.
Yes, from Eustace. Can you hear me?
Yes. You've got, you're voting yes on the minutes, Jim?
Yes.
Thank you. Mueller?
Yes.
Toominalo?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Ken Harris, were you there?
That's for Harris.
As a yes, okay, thank you. Motion carries. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. We have no old business. Under new business. Mr. Ronaldson would like to describe the Will County Transportation Improvement Program from 2021 into 2026.
Is there old business?
Discussing the impact fees.
Joe, you want to go back to old business or isn't a gen item?
You know what, you're right.
The one that's listed on the screen is wrong.
Yeah, no, the paper copy that I have did not have that on there. I apologize. I'll go off the screen and it does look like there's old business. So let's jump back to discussion of the road impact fees. Thank you, Ray.
All right, good morning, everyone. Back in the March meeting, if you remember actually being in a meeting room, we did talk about the impact fee. There's a memo provided, very long memo. It had the ordinance we put together back in 2004 to '08. We talked about that and there were some questions raised. So I provided the memo that's attached now, May 22nd. I just answered a couple of those questions. One being, can we change the fee on particular land uses such as residential? I've talked to the other two counties that had the impact fee, talked back and forth with the state's attorney's office to some degree. Chris is on here also to verify. While it does seem it is conceivable to do that, we just had to be careful in generating the assumptions that the advisory committee would have to put together. They would have to look at that, substantiate the claims of why residential would be different or lower than industrial. Because the law does require that new development to bear its fair share as the verbiage. So it would be in how you define fair share. So it would be up to the committee, which is made up of public sector, private sector, to come up and define that. And ultimately, the board approves their recommendations. So it is possible. I can't guarantee that that would be the result of the study. Ultimately, the committee makes, or the board makes final decisions, but it is possible. So there's the answer to that. And then also project cost. It does look like in comparing with the other counties, they have about a $230,000 to $270,000 a year cost to run the impact fee, which includes staff, publishing, and a variety of other issues. But their administrative fee, 5%, only brings in anywhere between $50,000 and $100,000. So there's a shortfall. So the county would be covering some of that cost, which I'm sure we could find a way to figure that out. So really, those are the two items that were asked about and those are the answers. So I don't know at this point if the committee wants to continue discussion of the impact fee or what the next steps they might want to do.
Does anyone from the committee have anything to add about the impact fees?
Yeah, Joe, this is Jim Eustace.
Okay, Jim.
I have my hand up. I just want you to know I did put my hand up. So Jeff, let me ask you on the residential versus commercial. And it might be easier that you just have a fee based on impact. But certainly, impact, for example, of a truck may be the impact of ten cars. I'm just, I don't know what it would be. I'm just throwing that out. So the counties that have it, they don't make any difference. They don't differentiate between cars and trucks. We have to do that. If it's an issue of pretty, what is your impact on the road?
Yeah, and discussions I've had with them, it's more just been rooftop versus square footage of industrial warehouse, commercial. They didn't really take into account the, it could be a hundred or a thousand greater impact of a car. That's not necessarily how it looked like, but they did not, they said that is a possibility. If you're going to do it again, they might actually look at that. So it's all about impact. So how you define what impact is, that's conceivable to do it that way.
So my concern is perhaps we continue to pursue this. And we first start with just that, impact. And define impact by residential and commercial. For example, you know, we know that residential actually creates more traffic, but it could be less impact on the roads. Or if trucks are on the road, we have to, we have to build the road differently. This is a more expensive road to build. So I think we should pursue defining impact. And when we make that determination, move forward. And I would look at, you know, I say there's a, I know I'm simplifying this, but you know, one truck equals fifty cars, whatever. And by the way, a lot of the logistics and warehousing, they do the traffic studies. They know exactly how many, well, maybe not always, they know exactly what they're going to start with, at least. You can project out a little bit what the future impact would be. But they can usually, they usually tell us exactly the truck traffic they're creating. So I think that's the way we should go. I still think it's something that we should pursue and give the taxpayers some relief from development. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Jim. I see Sandy, you have your hand up. Is that correct? She's gone. Mr. Gould, do you have a comment?
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning.
You know what, I'm just concerned that if we get down the road here and we do a study, it may have unintended consequences. And we talked about it at the last meeting about not putting the burden on residential. And my thinking is that unless residential could be excluded, perhaps now's not the best time to pursue this.
All right, thank you, Don. Any other comments on this?
Here, Van Dyne.
Yeah, yeah.
It's Mora Dunn, nice. Would you allow me to, Jeff Ronaldson, would you mute your microphone? We're getting a lot of noise.
There's nothing going on here, but yeah, sure, absolutely.
I know, sometimes it's just the air around you, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mora. I see Ray, your hands up. Go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, it's just kind of echoing what Board Member Gould said. If there is not a way to carve out the residential homes in this, then I would be a no vote on this moving forward. You know, the homeowners are just getting absolutely attacked, it feels like, from a taxing standpoint. And then when we go to build a home and the impact fees that they're put on, whether it's based on how many bedrooms, they're already paying a massive impact fees in most communities with regard to the school and all the other taxing bodies that throw impact fees on. And if we throw a road impact fees on just for the residential portion of it, I would be a no vote. If there was a way to carve it out, I would be absolutely open to look into this.
No, you're muted.
Sorry. Thank you, Ray. Mr. Ferry, go ahead.
Actually, I know the impact, semi can weigh up to eighty thousand pounds when loaded with certain things. And that comes down to a, the weight comes down to what weighs more, a pound of feathers or a pound of steel? They both weigh a pound, you know, the old brain twister. So I think it'd be best to look at impact fees with regards to the truck weights that the state already has up in their licensing.
All right. Thank you, Mark. I don't see any, I see old hands. I don't know if there are any new hands that are raised.
Mine's new again, Joe.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
You know, I think that Ray and Don, you're missing my point. And that is, is that you can craft this to have very minimal, minimal effect on residential. And not all residential necessarily would be impacting county roads. So, you know, I think here again, to pursue it, to see, you know, I think the primary burden would fall on the truck traffic. And I really think that if you were looking at, say, a very small impact on residential by saying, saying something along, every house produces two cars. Let's say every, a house with three bedrooms or more produces one car. It does make, you say every household produces one car. I think that, and that's what the impact fee will be based on. Don't have to base it on the criteria that's been used in the past. And that's my point. Let's see what we could craft. So you could have a very minimal effect on residential. Maybe it would be fifty bucks or something, or, you know, I'm just throwing out numbers. I don't know what it would be, but you could keep it pretty darn low. And if you're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a house, you know, I don't think, you know, fifty, a hundred bucks is going to make the determination that a biller has to pay and when the bill passes forward. So, and by the way, the pricing of a new home, I know all the costs are factored in, but there's more that goes into the pricing of a home, not just what the impact fees were. And I might also add that we stopped collecting impact fees for other taxing bodies that were excessive to Will County's impact fees. So we have helped the developers with impact fees and therefore the consumer. But not, but I think you still pursue it and see what kind of formula you can come up with. Not just say, well, the residential, so you have to pay, I'm not going to be for it. See what you can craft before you say no. That's it, thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Is there any other comments on this particular topic?
Yes, please.
Who is that? Meta, okay. Raise your hands up, and I see Sandy's hand is up. I don't know if you want to speak again, but go ahead, Meta.
I just raised it when Jim was speaking. I just wanted to comment that I agree with Jim and I think that, you know, we need to look at it a little deeper. As a person who's paid those impact fees to build a house before, I understand the frustration with all the fees and stuff, but that's a, you know, as Jim was saying, it could be something pretty minimal. So I'd like to pursue it a little more like Jim indicated. Thanks.
Thank you, Meta. If there's no other comments, Jeff, if we could maybe continue this conversation and get a little bit more information for next month?
Yes, I can, I'll talk with Chris, State Attorney's Office, Mary Tatro, again. The only problem I think we'll have is how do we define this stuff without actually starting the study? Because a lot of those assumptions will be vetted out by the consultant and all the processes that they have to go through. This is not a, not a quick and easy process. But as far as, again, summarize again, yeah, I don't think, I'm not illegal, as for Chris, but I don't think you can say zero on residential because there is an impact. And it won't be the weight, so it won't be the eighty thousand pounds, but it will be the capacity of the roadway itself. If we add in a large subdivision, then that puts a lot of more cars on the road, so there is that impact. So we don't think we could say zero. But you can minimize it with weight, hopefully, if that was proved out. But as to moving forward, I'll talk with the state's attorney's office. I'm not exactly sure how we'll do that without doing the study, which is a big cost. So maybe give us another month to check in on that.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. No other old new, other old business. So moving on to new business, draft of the Will County Transportation Improvement Program. Mr. Ronaldson?
All right. I believe most everyone on the committee, if not everyone, they were on the committee last year when we approved last year's plan. So hopefully, this won't be completely new. But we'll go through over a number of things to refresh everyone's memory. Just such the state law does require a county to have a twenty-year plan, which we do have. That was enacted back in March, first, 2017. The 2040 Plan, Will Connects. Before that, we had the 2030 Plan. Before that, we had the 2020 Plan. State law also requires us to do an annual update of that plan. And that's what this process right here is satisfying, by coming up with the multi-year plan, which we do every year. So we'll just go over some highlights of the plan that are in your agenda that's attached. This is the draft. We'll answer any questions you may have or any questions you have over the next couple of weeks. And then we'll bring it back next month when we'll actually have the public hearing and go to final approval. I don't think I'll be able to share a bet. Is this just something they'll just follow along on their own agendas? Or is that something we're going to try and bring up on the screen?
Jeff, I can turn the meeting over to you if you, if you have that as a PowerPoint that you would want to share and go through what you, what you want to. That's totally up to you and Joe, how you want to handle that. If it would be easier that way, if you're able to do that.
Well, we can try it anyways.
Okay, let me, I'm going to make you the host. And then from there, if you go up to the file and share
Right.
On the top left.
Yeah.
If you pull up your PowerPoint, I believe you should be able to change the screen.
All right. File, Share. It doesn't say my screen is grayed out.
Did I not make you?
Do you want to become presenter, it says?
You are host, so.
All right.
Does it, does it give you open and share?
It does now.
Okay. So from there, you should be able to open your PowerPoint?
It's loading, I think.
Yeah, it might take a minute. There we go. There you go.
All right.
Okay.
So from here. Here with, all right. Can't make it smaller. All right. So on your agenda, if this is attached, let's see, if I can go to page two. I can scroll up and down. Hope you're not getting dizzy.
It's not moving on mine. Is it moving on yours? Anybody?
Not there.
I'm wondering.
I was able to move it.
For some reason, I have control over it, but.
Oh, okay.
Jeff, if you want to tell me to, I don't know, how many pages is it?
Well, it's a lot, but I can just, if you want to just advance to the next one.
All right. You can just say advance and I can do it.
All right. If we can get to the second page.
Oh, sorry. Is that it? That page?
That's the first page.
Oh, I'm moving it, but you guys must be able to see it. Same deal.
All right, I have control of it. This is.
Can I do it?
This is strange. Okay, now do it.
It's moved now.
All right, introduction is at the top. That's what I see anyways.
Okay.
All right, so we're not going to go into, not going to read this or anything like that. We'll go through this as quickly as possible. The first two pages, which is this page and the next, is just details what I went over just briefly about the law. And then also references our bike plan and the freight study that was used to generate this plan, has used as background documents. If you want to look at page three, this is just also, as you go through it yourself, I'm just explaining what these are. The accomplishments are listed on page three and four. And they'll summarize some of the big things we accomplished getting several roads started, Ninety-Fifth Street being completed. It lists on there the Build Will program, what accomplishments we've made in that program. And then on this page, it references items in the Will Connects 2040 Plan that we have already implemented or are implementing now. And then that goes into plan development, the philosophy at the bottom, how to develop the plan. The next page, five and six years, summarize how a project goes from beginning to end. I explained this last year, but if you want to know how it starts and finishes, the various phases the project goes through. So they are outlined here. Are there any questions about how a project goes through the process? Phrase one, three, if everyone understands that enough anyways. All right. Next page, six. All right, challenges. We do list challenges in completing the plan. One being the popular item right now, unfortunately, is COVID. We talked about that last month. We're maintaining status quo funding for the entirety of the program. We're using a 20% reduction in the revenues we expect for this year. And that goes into the calculations of funds on hand where we start them. So we are making an account for that. And we are able to absorb that 20% in this year because one of our two big projects, we're not able to go because of right-of-way acquisition. So that should not be an issue for us moving forward. The other two challenges we regularly run is land use, land acquisition with court process, and of course, utility delays. Page seven just summarizes the actual revenue for this plan versus the other. It is the highest we've ever had, $367 million. Of course, that's because of the state MFT increase as well as the local gas tax increase. That is the reason for the up revenue. The next page has a diagram of various categories our projects fit in and where they fall, the largest item being corridor improvements. And then this page also lists what our revenues are for the MFT, RTA, gas taxes, a couple of dollars. And moving forward, these, these next few pages describe what those categories are, whether it's corridor improvements, preservation improvements, bridge improvements. Look, detail what those actually are, if you want to know what those categories are. And then we move on to this page, which is the major improvement highlights. I'm not going to go through all these. Of the projects that are in the plan, at least the major ones, what they are and where they are at. And then the very last part of the plan goes through a list. This table lists every project in a category, but it also lists out what year, which particular phase of that project is going to start, for anticipated to start, and then the dollars associated to that. All the expenses we anticipate, and if I back up one page, they're summarized here with a total of $363 million, which is a little bit under the revenue of $367. So this is a fiscally constrained plan. So that is the plan in a nutshell. If there are projects you want me to go through to give an update on, I'm open to that or for other questions on the plan itself. I'll, I guess, ask questions in that. Joe, you want to moderate these questions?
Yes, I will. I'll go through the list here. And I see one hand, and that is Mr. Frizzalone. Go ahead.
Hey, Jeff. Hey, Jeff, you know, when, when you were pitching us on your gas tax benefits, you showed the projects that would be, could be accelerated. Just, is it possible if you take your list and just, are the ones that were accelerated? So we have something to talk about and say, these are the projects that are accelerated due to the gas tax? If we're, where's that money going? Kind of outside of the field? And then just, just a minor note on the. And then just a minor note on the Bell Road project, which says it's going to be done in year 2002, which was years ago. So you're a little late on that one. You're going to update the date on that one. I'd appreciate it. And then also, you only have two bridge projects on there. Either of those accelerated?
No, the two bridges on there is the one, they're just held up in court. The Cedar, they're held up in court for many years now. So maybe the next year, we'll start that one. And the other one is the new one on Kentucky County line. So we're just starting that. There's not really any way to accelerate it because it's environmental and that takes what it takes.
Okay.
But yes, as far as the starting of the project, absolutely, which projects were enlisted because of the MFT increase. We'll show them in the next version for next month.
Great.
Jeff, once you're done with your PowerPoint, I think you'll need to give the host back to me. And I'm not quite sure.
All right. Yeah, if there's no more questions, I don't need the presentation anymore. So I can get that back over there.
Okay.
I don't see any other hands up. Is there any other questions from the committee members, Jeff? Okay. Thank you, Jeff. If you wouldn't mind putting the agenda back on the screen when you guys get a chance.
Bet I'm not really seeing an option to do that.
Can you close your PowerPoint and see what happens?
Sure.
Let's just try that. Okay, great. I did this yesterday on the ad hoc meeting, but more, do you have any ideas as far as how to fix this?
Yeah. And I just didn't want to interrupt you. I think, well, I just tried some minutes, didn't. You guys are still seeing Jeff's screen, correct?
Correct. Jeff, on the, do you have the participants listed on the right-hand side?
I do.
Beth, if you go to participant, you can reclaim the host role.
I can also see.
Okay, there we go. There we go. Let's do that.
There we go.
Okay. So now I think I have to open mine.
Here we go.
Here we go. Back in business. Everyone seeing the agenda again?
Yes, I see it.
I'm seeing the agenda.
Thank you.
Just popped up. Yep, thank you. Okay. If you can advance one slide, Beth, and we can continue. Thank you. I need number one.
Number one was the transportation program. So number two will start all your regular resos.
I, my paper copy is completely different. So let's start with this number two then. Confirming award of contract to Van Mack Electric, $229,600, I'm sorry, $768 for Brick Street at the Mills Road intersection traffic signal, County Board District Eight.
Move, Gold.
Second Harris. To Minello.
Okay, we have a second. I'll ask for a discussion on that. No discussion. Can I get a previous roll in a second?
Use this previous roll.
Thank you.
Second Cowan.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Confirming award of contract to deconstruction, $299,634.48 191st Street from 80th Avenue to Harlem Avenue overlay, County Board District Two.
Move, Meustus.
Second Harris. Previous roll, Gold.
Okay.
Second Cowan.
Second Cowan. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number four, confirming award of contract to Deller, Denler, I'm sorry, $215,076.70 countywide crack ceiling, all county board districts.
So move, To Minello.
Second Mueller.
Previous roll, call Meustus.
Second Tyson.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number five, improvement by county under the Illinois Highway Code for countywide crack ceiling, all county board districts using MFT funds, $230,000.
Move, Tyson.
Second Cowan.
Previous roll, Gold.
Second Meustus.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right. Motion carries. Number six, confirming award of contract to superior road striping, $297,000, $297,200 countywide raised reflective pavement markers, all county board district.
Motion, Ferry.
Second Mueller.
Previous roll, call Meustus.
Second Tyson.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Improvement by county under the Illinois Highway Code for the countywide raised reflective pavement markers, all county board districts using the MFT funds, $315,000.
Move, Meustus.
Second Gold.
Previous roll, Tyson.
Second Ferry.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, confirming award of contract to PT Farrell Construction, $86,638.57 for Manhattan Road District Overlay and Ranch Oaks Subdivision, the County Board District Two.
Move, Meustus.
Second Tyson.
Previous roll, Cowan.
Second Ferry.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, confirming award of contract to deconstruction, $124,717.38 Troy Road District Overlay on various roads, County Board District Six and Ten.
Move, Gold.
Motion, Tyson. Second Mueller.
Previous roll, Ferry.
Second Cowan.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Motion carries. Number 10, authorizing approval of professional services agreement for the right-of-way acquisition services for several parcels of property along Bell Road from 151st Street North to Martingale Lane, County Board District Seven.
Move, Tyson.
Second Gold.
Previous roll, call Meustus.
Second Ferry.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, authorizing approval of professional services agreement for design engineering services. Lareway Road and US Route 52, County Board Districts Eight and Twelve.
Move, Tyson.
Second Ferry.
Previous roll, To Minello.
Second Cowan.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Anything other, other new business? Okay. I see no hands. Over to you, Jeff, Director of Transportation Discussion.
All right. I just have two items, or just announcements really. Many of you are familiar with Brandon Road. It has been closed by IDOT since January regarding the bridge, lock and dam. That remains closed. And we checked in recently. There is still no date as to when it will be opening. There's, they're fabricating parts still. Process is ongoing. And we did apply just last month, our Build 2020 grant. We applied for Lareway Road corridor between Nelson and Cedar, a $12 million grant. So that did go in. And now we're just in the waiting stage of that. So those are the only two announcements I have.
All right. Thank you. Chris, do you have any, anything to report on?
I believe he's set up on Lana's iPad, so I'm not sure. And I have not received any word that he had anything to discuss.
Okay. All right. Thank you. There have been some monthly reports given to the committee. Is there any questions on any of the reports? All right. Moving along. Does anyone from the committee like to report on anything? I see no hands. Public comment. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak?
I have no comments from the public.
Thank you, Beth. There are no chairman's report or announcement. We have no executive session today. Our next meeting is scheduled for July 2nd, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. Motion to adjourn?
Well, we're just going to stay on this, right, for the committee of the whole?
Yeah, the work.
Correct. Yes. Yes, this meeting will adjourn and then we will start the committee of the whole at 10:00.
Yeah, we don't have to reset it. Okay, thanks.
Don't do me.
Are we adjourning this meeting still?
There was a, there was a first and a second. Can we get a previous roll?
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.
Great job, staff.
Thank you all.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, Karen, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Okay for an old guy.
Yeah.
Old guy with long hair.
You can't get, you can't get any family members or any barbers to come to your house?
I haven't really approached that angle, that may be next. I'm getting on the desperate side, but anyway.
Hey, this might be the one time you can actually maybe get a ponytail going.
That time is long past. Trust me. Trust me.
Oh, you know.
My, my hair is so, my hair is so blonde, you know, when it gets too long, then it kinda like, it comes out, you know, I was thinking of collecting them up and shipping them off in an envelope to Trump so that he could fix his wig.
I can, how are you?
Okay, what's the barber?
Huh?
What's the barber?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well.
I'm just curious.
You know, you, you have, you have an upper, upper hand on everybody.
Right, right.
Well, I already got my hair done, so.
All righty.
Hey, Rhonda.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Rhonda.
Good morning, Ken.
Morning, Rhonda.
Good morning. How's everything going, Karen?
Good, how are you?
Is it going smooth?
Yeah, um, after this little talk, we're probably not gonna, um, I'll talk during this. We're probably not gonna open up to the public till July.
We're, we're gonna, you know, we're waiting for, we're waiting for a big Senate bill to pass, and once that passes, then we'll make a decision, but we're gonna be closer to the end of June, I believe.
Yeah.
Which is what matters most.
Is that why?
We're on schedule with everything else, though, which is.
Is where you need to be.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah. Hi, Chuck.
Hi, Chuck.
I can learn to understand you much better if I can get familiar with the.
Sorry, I was having trouble with my mute button there. How's everybody doing? I can be heard?
How are things over in your guys' office?
Things are going well, you know, we've been, uh, pretty much open nonstop. We're still trying to, uh, you know, we're doing marriage licenses solely by appointment. You know, all, everything else, we're trying to encourage either to do online, by telephone, um, so things are going pretty well. But we're, we're open, you know, every, every, full service right now at this point.
Okay. Are you guys busy? I mean, do you have a lot of people coming in?
So, you know, again, a lot of the, a lot of the things that we're doing, we're trying to encourage people to do, um, everything online, or by telephone, or by email, um, and, and we're getting a lot of, uh, you know, we're getting a lot of cooperation with that, but that doesn't mean we still don't have, you know, uh, you know, random people wandering in from the public, you know. Tim's office is busy, uh, people will just kinda stroll in here if they feel they need something. But yeah, so it, it's, and it is kinda busy, we, we try to limit the marriages by, uh, two couples in at a time, and we're pretty booked solid on that. We, we started out doing it a, uh, one day a week, we added a second day shortly thereafter, and now we're doing it five days a week, so we have a pretty steady steam of, stream of, uh, couples coming in, two couples at a time at the most, uh, to receive marriage licenses.
Isn't it amazing how so many people are still getting married right now?
I don't know whether they're doing it, or how they're doing it, I suppose a lot of that is, is live streaming right now, but yeah, we've had, and we've had, we were booked from the minute, uh, we, we started doing one day a week, we realized pretty quickly we had, we'd have to add two. We did, and here we are, you know, with the, uh, with the reopening, we're, we're five days a week, but it is by appointment only.
Okay. Well, that's good.
And our election crew. Nonstop, so.
Yeah, and you guys are waiting to find out what, I mean, that, that bill's not gonna pass for mail only, right?
It's not gonna be a full, they've already passed, uh, legislation, I think we're just waiting for the governor's signature on it, uh, but they have passed vote by mail, emergency vote by mail legislation for, uh, you know, for this upcoming election.
Okay.
And it's gonna require some significant, um.
Work on you then.
Yeah, absolutely, and some significant costs.
Oh, yeah.
So you say you're not gonna open up until July?
Yeah, because I guess all our cubicles are attached to each other.
Okay.
So they're, they're barely, if, if they are six feet apart, they're slim, so they're gonna take the top rails off of our cubicles and add glass on top.
Okay.
So those are ordered, we're just waiting for them to come in.
Okay.
So it's all, you know, it's on a wait thing right now. But I gotta say, our customers have been great about, um, mailing everything in. You know, if somebody comes in the parking lot and they want, yeah, a document recorded, Amy, Janice, or I will go out there and get it from them.
Okay.
But, um, I'm actually, my staff's really enjoying not having the public in. Kinda quiet.
Guys, you shouldn't be talking on, we're on a site that the public can come on, we're not in public meeting yet, so we really shouldn't have conversations on it.
Thank you.
Denise, are you on the line, it's Maura.
Good morning, everyone, I see most of the board members are on, so, um, I believe Mark Ferry is going to go ahead and call the meeting to order then, and we'll do the roll.
Good morning, everyone, I'd like to call this meeting of the Committee of the Hall, um, to order at 10:04 AM. And, uh, Beth, can you call the roll?
Frizzalone?
Here.
Newquist? O'Gallum? Cook? Here. Amanda, are you here?
Here.
Okay, I see Judy is here as well, then. Uh, Eustace?
Here.
Rice? Tyson?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Trainier?
Present.
Fritz? Bueller?
Here.
Ull?
Here.
Vandyne?
Here.
Balich?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Ventura?
Present.
Dollinger?
Here.
Markham? Berkowitz?
Here.
Cowan?
Here.
Tumelo?
I'm here.
Weigel?
Here.
Prolydis? Winfrey? And Ferry?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much, everybody, for your attendance today. I'm looking for Rachel Ventura to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, and to our.
All right, um, now I would like to ask for the silence to acknowledge our fallen leader, Larry Walsh, who lost his battle yesterday to cancer, and so if you could observe a moment of silence, and say a prayer for Larry in your own way. Thank you. Now let's, uh, go forward with today's agenda, there's no old business, but there is new business, and, uh, before we get into the new business, I would like to ask folks to hold their questions, write down your questions, hold your questions till the end, and then you can ask all the department heads, for whoever pertains to your question, uh, let them give their reports first, independent of questions, and we'll have the questions afterwards.
Excuse me, Mark?
Yeah.
This is Lana, I have Mary Tatro here, and she would like to make an announcement, if you will allow that, please.
Sure.
Okay, Mary, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone, um, and I just wanted to ask for a vote to hold a special meeting in view of the sad passing of our county executive Larry Walsh. By statute, one-third of the county board must request to call a special meeting, so my recommendation is that someone make a motion to call a special meeting, and that we actually have a vote on it.
This is Jackie, I'll make a motion for a special meeting in light of the vacancy for the county executive position. Second, Berkowitz.
And that.
Okay, a motion and a second, uh, do we need a roll call here?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Beth's call.
Frizzalone?
Yes.
O'Gallum?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Eustace?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Trainier?
Yes.
Bueller?
Yes.
Ull?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Balich?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ventura?
Yes.
Dollinger?
Yes.
Um, Berkowitz?
Yes.
Cowan?
Yes.
Tumelo?
Yes.
Weigel?
Yes.
And Ferry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. There'll probably be a special announcement on that, look in your email for when that meeting is set for, keep an eye on your email for that date. All right, next, uh, we don't have any old business to discuss, according to the agenda. Next would be new, new business, and once again, I would ask that, uh, everybody save their questions till all the reports are done, and then go back and question the individual person. First, we have an update on Will County Rapid Rehousing Efforts, that'd be Mike Hennessy and Christie McNichol.
Um, Mark, Mike Hennessy is unable to attend today due to a family emergency. We have Sarah from, Sarah, I apologize, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, but she is with United Way, and I believe Christie McNichol from the VAC is also, um, going to speak.
Okay.
Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning, Beth, good morning, Mr. Ferry, thank you so much for having me here, uh, this morning, I truly appreciate it. We also thank you for your support with the Rapid Rehousing Initiative to get those homeless into housing. I am pleased to report that as of the, the last report dated, there were 13 households that we were able to get into housing, throughout, uh, Will County, so we had Joliet, um, and Shanahan, and of the generous $60,000 that we have, uh, received, we have spent thus far $26,837.69. So, um, things are moving forward, we're very proud of this, um, we thank our partners, uh, who are helping make this possible, Trinity Services, Guardian Angel Community Services, and Response Now, and Christie McNichol, um, has a wealth of, uh, experience and expertise in this, and she has been instrumental in, uh, helping us move this forward and getting individuals housed in our county. So Christie, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Awesome, thanks, guys. Um, so I had actually sent Denise and Ken an email, um, regarding that $26,000, and I wanted you guys to understand what that $60,000 has turned into out of that $26,000. So each time a person is housed through Rapid Rehousing, um, they sign a 12-month lease, and out of that 12-month lease is 12 months of rent. So the email, I'm pulling it up right now, I'm sorry. The email, what, what's your initial $60,000 and the $26,000 that was spent has turned into is $136,000 in Will County, in Will County's economy right now. And that's just like generic math, because the average rental amount in the county of Will is 9.50 for a one-bedroom apartment. Not all of those individuals that were housed were singles. Um, one, the one in Shanahan specifically is a single mom with four children, so she obviously didn't get a one-bedroom, but just for like simplistic purposes, that $26,000 has turned into $136,800 back into the economy. I'm very proud that you guys, you know, trusted us and trusted Will County and the community service partners with this investment, because it truly is an investment back into Will County. Do you guys have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Christie and, uh, Sarah, for that report. Next on the agenda is an update from the elected officials and department heads regarding COVID-19. Who's up first?
Mark, I know Karen Stupel is on, and I believe.
I know she is too.
Brian Conzer also has his hand up, I don't know if he's looking to go first, or, um, from the Sheriff's Department. Brian, did you have a hand up for something? You're on mute, if you do. I think he put his hand down.
I've made him the panelist, Maura, he was only on as an attendee.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, if I could go first, that would be great today, um, I have a few updates, if, uh, everybody's okay with that.
Oh.
Okay, um, first I'm gonna address the. Okay, um, first I'm gonna address the COVID-19, um, some of the, uh, actions the sheriff has taken to control the exposure spread of COVID-19. Uh, we've required masks for our staff since the start of the pandemic in March. We've been requiring temperature checks for all Will County Sheriff's Office staff upon entering the jail, courthouse, or public safety complex. Calls for service that can be handled through the telephone hour. Um, dispatch screen callers if they are, if any of their members of their household have any COVID symptoms or positive tests. Any of our assist ambulance calls are handled with all PPE recommended by the CDC. The sheriff's office has ten positive employee cases. Eight of those have since recovered and returned to work. Two are out, uh, recovering, I sent a spreadsheet, uh, you may have gotten that. Uh, the jail currently has no COVID-19 cases. The sheriff's office requires a negative test for employees to return to work. Uh, in order to prevent COVID-19 from entering the jail, our medical provider screens and takes temperatures in our saliport, that's like the garage before you enter the facility. If an inmate has symptoms before entering the facility, they are required to wear a mask and are immediately taken to a negative airflow cell in our medical, uh, portion of the jail. This is also the process for inmates that are suspected of COVID already in the jail. We have used two of our pods for quarantine. Once admitted into the jail, they are required to spend fourteen days in the first intake pod, followed by an additional fourteen days in the second pod before being allowed into the general population. As of June first, 2020, all of the Will County Sheriff's employees have returned to work. We have separated the workstations and ordered glass partitions for the cubicles in several divisions at the public safety complex. Uh, that's my report on COVID-19. I would also like to give a report on the, um, uh, current, uh, George Floyd protests. Um, that, I just wanted everybody to know that detectives have been monitoring threats or posts in relations to George Floyd protests twenty-four seven. I have received calls from board members in reference to threats against neighborhoods being vandalized or damaged, which all have been proven false. We are incurring some extra overtime costs to protect the current and new courthouse due to continued social media posts indicating the possibility of damaging the courthouse. An example is, we got one yesterday that said, "Look at all that pretty glass at the new courthouse." It would be a shame if somebody broke all that glass. Uh, on Sunday, we did have, uh, a rock thrown through the rear door of the, uh, county office building. So we are, uh, hiring additional personnel in other areas of the county. On June second, during a peaceful protest in Homer Glen, the jewel on Bell Road was vandalized with graffiti on the rear of the building. They spray painted "Fuck the Police." Uh, we do have suspect information on the offender. Uh, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much, Brian Conzer.
Mark?
Yes, Beth?
It's, no, it's Maura.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I, 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 I think Denise might be on the line, um, via phone, and I just want, um, well, I, I maybe, oh, I just want Beth to check, because I cannot. So Beth, if you would unmute number five and see if that's Denise.
Denise, is this you?
This is me. I am on the line.
Yeah, all right.
And, uh, and I can hear what's going on. The area here is fairly noisy, though, and there's a lot of background, so I'm just going to stay on listen mode. I appreciate everybody's updating us on everything that's happened, and, uh, ask everybody to not forget to respond to the email that you received from Beth. Thank you.
Also, Denise, just so you know, um, you can press your mute on your side, and, which will keep you silent, but we can leave you unmuted on our side. That way, if you do wanna talk, all you need to do is press your unmute button.
Good for her.
Sure.
And I see that Gretchen is on as well, as an attendee. I'm going to go ahead and make you a, a panelist, Gretchen. Um, so you should be a panelist now as well. Um, Mark, I know we have, uh, Judge Shanestead on the line, on the courtroom meeting.
I was gonna call on him next for his report.
Thank you.
And, uh, just wanna thank everybody for getting here. In those high circumstances, just keep everybody from being readed to stroke at ten o'clock. So anyway, um, glad to have everybody aboard. Judge Shanestead, could you, uh, uh, unmute your microphone and give us your report, sir?
I will. Thank you very much, and good morning to everybody. And on behalf of the entire judiciary and judicial branch of government of Will County, we extend our sympathies and condolences to, uh, Mr. Walsh and, uh, his family and friends. Um, on May twentieth, the Illinois Supreme Court gave all chief judges the authority to reopen our courts as we saw fit. Uh, that was done in a way to ensure everyone's safety while still providing necessary and constitutionally required services. To provide context, we have thirty-seven courtrooms in three facilities, plus our branch courts. Uh, when this all started, we went to six courtrooms for emergencies only. As of June first, we now have most, but not all of our courtrooms active on at least a part-time basis. We are transitioning slowly, starting to stagger cases and using a lot of video. All of this is with the goal to regulate the number of people coming into our facilities. It's a little early to tell, uh, but our planning seems to be going very well so far. We clean and disinfect constantly, as long as we have the product, and we re, we also require facial coverings and social distancing, uh, in all the facilities. We have had a COVID-related issue. Uh, two judges in one of our divisions, uh, have recently tested positive. Uh, all of the other judges have now been tested in that division and have tested negative. Um, everybody else that I'm aware of that has been tested, have tested negative as well. Both of those judges believe they were infected or exposed outside of courthouse, uh, related activities. Um, we still aren't doing jury trials, although I talk weekly with the Director of Jury Services. We are now set for them, but the earliest I anticipate criminal juries is early July, and civil juries sometime in August. Um, by the way, my thanks, big thanks, go out to the Will County Health Department, Sue Alenick, uh, and her staff. Uh, they have been essential to us in providing assistance and suggestions, uh, as we have had issues occasionally, uh, over, especially over the last, uh, week or so. Uh, finally, as many of you may know, I have secured the Rialto Square Theater for our highest-volume traffic court. There was simply no way to establish social distancing and reasonably conduct court, that court, at the same time. Uh, that will start June eighth. The only thing I'll say about that is I'm sure it will be the most beautiful courtroom in the state, so long as we are using it. And that is my report. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm glad to have you aboard this morning. Uh, who's next for a report from the department? Let's call on, uh, Karen Stukel. I know she's here.
Hi, Mark.
Hi.
Good morning, everyone. Um, since my last update a couple weeks ago, we had one employee that, um, had tested positive for COVID. And she's been off, and in fact, it's been five weeks since she's been off, and she actually returned to work today, so we're quite happy for that and that she's doing well. Um, we did take the initiative to go around, because our office is different than most offices, where all our cubicles are attached to one another. So you are barely at a six-foot mark from one employee to another, depending on where they're sitting at their desk. So we've worked with, um, Midwest furniture, and we are having extensions put onto the top of the cubicles, which will be glass, so you'll still be able to see from the back to the front without any obstruction, but it just gives everyone, on my staff, that little bit more added protection. And like I was talking to Mark earlier, we are looking probably to open up the beginning of July to the public, just because, um, those are on order and we're waiting for them to get in and get installed. And, um, as far as for the public safety, we are putting together a notice to our, to go out to our searchers and everyone, that we are gonna limit it, because there are computers in the public access areas, they're very close together. So we are gonna limit, um, down to two searchers, um, at a time, and they can make a reservation, and we're gonna put an hour limit in after that, so this way, if we have any walk-ins, we can accommodate the, um, public as well. We have, um, we do require, um, if, it, right now, we're still working half-staff, so once we bring the whole staff back and the glasses and stuff, they will not have to wear their masks at their desk, but if they do get up to go to the washroom, to go to lunch, to walk about the office, they will be required to wear their mask at that time. And of course, if we're work, um, once we open to the public, even though we have the barrier that the, um, maintenance department has made for us, we are still gonna be requiring to wear masks and gloves when taking, um, currency and documents from customers at that time. So everything else is going well. Um, we are still recording over five hundred documents a day, so we are getting everything that comes in every single day. We are getting everything recorded. Um, we did start doing all documents electronic recording, and by doing also MyDex, which is an electronic process, we're doing seventy-five percent of them electronically for the state of Illinois. And I haven't gotten my numbers as to how much e-recording, but that has been a huge plus, because it takes out of, the best thing about the whole e-recording is that if a document comes in and it's wrong, they can get it back immediately. There's no snail mail, there's no FedEx cost. So we, every, uh, from everyone that I've heard, from our title companies to our, um, the banks and everything, they're all really enjoying being able to e-report everything that we have. The only thing we do not e-report in that is class, because those have to be brought in and signed. So other than that, we are doing well, and I wish everyone the best.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Uh, I see Chuck Pelkey's in the house. Are you from the clerk's office, of course? Are you the representative, I mean to say?
Right, I'll be, uh, stepping in. Lauren could not be here today, so, uh, I'll be, uh, representing her office today.
Okay, so you wanna go ahead and give your report from that office?
Absolutely. So, uh, the clerk's office pretty much has been open, um, on a limited basis, you know, and, and never really closed. We, um, we, we started out by encouraging, um, everyone, or as many people as possible, to, you know, obtain their vital records, uh, marriage certificates, birth certificates, death certificates, by either phone, online, or email. We were encouraging people who, uh, um, were communicating with our tax extension department to do it by phone and email, and our tax redemption. We, uh, remained open. People have to be able to come in and pay off back taxes, uh, in person, so, um, we were, we, we kept open for anyone who needed to come in and pay off, uh, pay off those, uh, taxes. Our marriages, we were open, well, we, we've been, uh, we started out by requiring people to make appointments, uh, to limit, uh, the public in our office. Uh, we were accepting, uh, on, on one day a week, on Mondays, um, two, two couples, you know, per half-hour shift. Uh, very quickly, we had to add a second day onto that now, uh, with, uh, things reopening. We are taking marriage licenses by appointment, five days a week, um, and things are filling up quickly, so, um, people do need to call in, um, and we, there may be, uh, up to a week or two wait before you're able to get a, a, a marriage license. Our staff, um, you know, for the most part, has been working non-stop. We try to reduce staff as much as possible at the onset, um, but we have had, uh, our, our staff has been in for the most part, uh, you know, throughout the, uh, the duration of this pandemic. Uh, there are front staff that deals primarily with the public, has been given gloves and masks and are required to wear them. The public as well, when they enter our office, is required to wear protective face coverings also. Um, thanks to Mike Miglerini, who, uh, created some protective shields as well to, uh, limit, uh, you know, potential exposure. Every one of our stations at the front counter has a protective shield as well. Our staff is being encouraged also to, uh, wipe down commonly-used surfaces regularly with sanitary or with, um, disinfectant wipes that are provided a, at the counter. The staff that are, uh, the staff that's coming in, every staff member is required at the start of each day to answer a couple of quick questions, just, just to make certain that they're healthy and they're not, uh, uh, feeling poorly, and we also take their temperatures before the day starts. So things are going, uh, well in that regard. Uh, we expect, uh, to continue in this fashion until, uh, you know, for further notice. Um, I also was asked to just provide a quick update with regard to the, um, legislation, the vote-by-mail legislation that passed recently in response to, uh, COVID-19. Our office is right now, uh, looking at that legislation and responding to it. Um, you know, the, the legislation essentially requires the office to mail out a vote-by-mail, uh, ballot application, uh, to every voter, or everyone who registered or, or applied to vote, going back to the twenty-eighteen general election. This is a pretty, uh, large segment of the voting, uh, population here in Will County. Um, we are looking at the costs associated with that. Um, initially, we, we also this year have, uh, to mail out our voter registration cards, um, and that's a mass mailing that goes out to every registered voter in Will County. With the onset of the, uh, uh, vote-by-mail legislation, we have taken a look at, and we are moving forward with combining that, uh, the voter registration card mailing with the application mailing. Essentially, we expect to, uh, save about a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars in postage costs alone on that. Um, so that's, that's really where we are with that. We're also, um, looking at, uh, we, we've increased equipment, uh, to, uh, increase our capacity to print and assemble ballots. We are expecting up to, uh, to process up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand vote-by-mail ballots in this upcoming election cycle. Um, it's going to put a significant strain on our staff, but I know that they're, uh, up to it. We have shifted around staff, and we've, uh, you know, purchased additional printing equipment to increase our capacity, our printing capacity, and our assembly capacity. We're looking at the hiring of election judges as well to process returned vote-by-mail ballots, uh, per the new statute, and, um, I believe that's really about it. And, uh, be available for questions if anybody has any.
Okay, thank you very much, Chuck. Um, next, I don't see Andrea Chastain on the, uh, participants list. Is there a representative from her office? Or is she there and I just don't see her?
Yes, I'm Chuck Foyers, uh, on behalf of the Service Clerk's Office. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
So, uh, our staff is back. Um, we were at half-staff, uh, prior to June first, and we now have all of our staff back, with the exception of, um, the high-risk employees. Um, thank God we've had no cases yet. Um, however, we did send out four employees based upon, um, a couple of judges testing positive. Uh, one of those four already got a result, and it was negative, which is good, and we're waiting on the other three. They're out. Um, as far as, um, the Rialto, we've been working on getting signage and, um, getting that facility ready for traffic court. Um, in addition, we are, we purchased a lot of, um, portable plexiglass windows with pass-through to provide some separation, uh, from the clerk with, um, people in the courtroom. We already have glass at our front counters. Um, we are coordinating with Kathy Henderson. Uh, she's done a wonderful job, has started helping to clean areas, common areas, and so on in our office. Um, we are insisting on people using masks if there was a six feet of somebody, and, uh, that's pretty much the rest of my report.
All right, and thank you. Thank you very much for that report. Uh, Tim Rofey, I thought I saw you here. Are you here?
Good morning, everybody. How are you?
Good morning.
So the Treasurers' Office is up and operating as usual. Um, we're grateful for the, uh, um, changes we made to the front of the office so we could protect both, uh, the public and, uh, my employees. Um, good news that, uh, the, uh, tax receipts are coming in at a pretty good pace. Hard to do an exact apples-to-apples comparison, because the second distribution this year went out a week earlier, or one week short of last year's. Last year, we sent out, uh, seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight million. Uh, this year, we're sending out, uh, yet, uh, today, five-hundred-and-twenty-two million. Uh, but the first, uh, distribution was up a little bit, so, um, we're not, not doing too badly. Receipts are, are on a good pace. Uh, school districts, uh, of note, as I, as I mentioned to the board in writing, I have received a, an average of thirty-two and a half percent of their total levy, uh, as of today, uh, some as high as thirty-nine. So I think they should all be fine making, uh, uh, debt, uh, payments as well as regular, uh, expenses, and, uh, I think all the other taxing bodies, I didn't analyze those, but I think they're all about the same boat. Um, that's all I have, unless anybody has questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks for that report. All right, thanks for that report, Tim. Anyone from the Coroner's Office? Well, we're not getting an answer on that one. I don't see Lori Summers on the list. Lori, are you there?
I don't see Lori on. I do see Jackie Trainier has her hand up. Mark, I don't know if she had a question for someone who already spoke.
No, I'm waiting. I just wanted to get in the queue. I understand we're waiting till the end.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Mark, I didn't see Lori in the office this morning yet, but, um, I know she usually runs over to the Coroner's Office, and I'm sure there's other things going on with Mary working there, too.
Okay.
I met Mark.
Oh, Duffy Blackburn. How about Duffy Blackburn? Is there any report from him?
Mark, if I could just, um, Mike, I don't know if their hands are up for, right now, but Nick Palmer and Mike Frisland both have their hands up.
Okay, who was first?
Just getting in the queue for question time.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Jackie's waiting for question time as well. Nick?
Nick?
And Mark, do you want me to go ahead, or Nick?
Duffy can go first, Mark, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, Duffy, go ahead.
Okay, uh, the four-person staff, the Auditor's Office is all working in here. Um, there are a few mandated audits that will not be done in person. Those are our landfill audit that we do our receipts from our landfill revenues, and then the fixed inventory audit, audit, and the assets of the county for the different federal programs will have to be done remotely. Um, I do want to just bring up, um, the fraud hotline. You may have seen the article by Alex Ortiz in the Herald News about our fraud hotline. Um, just, again, I want to reiterate, it is a third-party hotline that we are now going with. It's BKD Integra Report, so if you see that, um, on the website, you can be able to use it 24 hours a day, and you'll be able to watch a brief video on the, on the website. You'll be able to call the number, they can give you an instructions on how to do it. You can give up to 10 minutes of information on the, uh, report. Again, it's a third-party, it's safe, it's secure, and it's protected, and it allows anyone to anonymously report any violations of policies or procedures or voice, any concerns you may have regarding potentially inappropriate activities here in our workplace. Um, so, all the department heads out there, please, um, notify your staff again if you haven't already. Um, in this time, again, in adverse situations, uh, the risk of fraud is going up, and unfortunately, we know that government is number two in line of fraud, only behind the banking sector. Um, other than that, I appreciate it. We'll have more reports. I've gotten a number of requests, um, for COVID expenses. I know Karen and, uh, the CARES Act ad hoc committee has worked on that. I know that Ken Harris is working on that. Um, and there has, have been requests for other, uh, vendors and, uh, checks that we have paid out to, uh, particular vendor groups. And I just want to let you know and remind you that the checkbook, uh, is online, and you can see those and view those at willcountyauditor.com. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Thanks, Duffy. Nick, uh, excuse me.
Morning, everyone. Um, before I just give a very brief report, I, just on behalf of the Walsh family, I want to thank everybody who's already spoken up and offered their thoughts and prayers. It's obviously a very tough time, uh, for me, too, but it's, it's, we honor Larry and all the service, and, and we thank you for your support. So, just a brief report from our office. Um, we continue to meet with many of the people who are on this call now, um, department heads, countywide officials, the chief judge and others. Um, as a clearinghouse for information sharing and concerns, we do that now twice a week. Um, we have resolved some issues through those calls, and it's just a good clearinghouse, particularly with the other disturbances and kind of just information sharing. Um, our HR department has, with the guidance and some support from the Health Department, put out guidance on COVID, which I hear everybody, it's nothing earth-shattering. We are just following and encouraging people to follow social distancing, masks, washing your hands, and everyone says, we know that, but people still don't do it. So, we remind people when they're out in the public spaces, in the buildings, in the, uh, in their offices, moving around to wear the masks. Um, it is a guidance, and we try to follow it. So, and then we've also offered for the executive branch some guidance on, um, telework, um, because we do still have some people who are working remotely, and in, in the event, a lot of this, we're learning from this whole experience, and hopefully we'll be able to document so that if we ever have anything similar to this, we have some additional best practices that we've learned. So, that's ongoing, but, um, in the executive branch, we have had people working throughout. We had a lot of people working remotely. Um, we've brought some of those folks back, um, but we've had to adjust, and, and we're giving some flexibility to different departments based on medical needs of their employees and/or spacing in the offices, but we're doing our best. Um, on the disturbances, the social disturbances, whatever you want to call them, we have tried to be common sense about that, um, in one, and I, I see David DuBois is on there if he wants to comment, but we've tried to use common sense in sending people out on the street to continue to do our work as much as possible, but not endanger our employees if there is risk. Um, we would rather delay a service than have an employee be put at risk, and so we've, I think, used very prudent, um, sensible practices on that. And then, um, the Sheriff's Office mentioned the county building had one damaged window. Um, we are working to get that repaired, but as you'd expect, there's a lot of broken windows around, so there's a little bit of a delay on that, but we're, uh, working on that. And then the last thing, we're working very closely with the board, Leadership Committee Chair on the CARES money. Um, there's another meeting tomorrow, and, um, as we've said before, there's going to be a formal process for departments to submit additional requests and others, um, elected officials, so that we can do this in the most responsible, accountable way. So, just stay tuned for that, but I know there's board members who may want to comment on that, too. So, that's it. I'll take questions when it's time. Thanks.
All right, Nick, thanks for that report. Um, any department heads?
Mark, we have, uh, Rhonda Novak has her hand up.
Okay, let's go to Rhonda.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I just want to start by saying that, um, we have had staff in the office, uh, since March when this, um, COVID-19 began. Uh, we currently have 80% of our staff rotating hours. Um, we are doing the same thing that Karen Stukel is doing. We have Midwest Office working with us on, um, separating our cubicles with some type of plexiglass. Uh, this is not, um, a big time for us to have public foot traffic. Uh, appeal time is around the corner, and, and that's going to change some things, uh, legislative, or not legislatively, but legally, how we're going to handle face-to-face, um, appeals for us on assessment, and I would expect we're going to have quite a few of those. Um, if you're getting questions from taxpayers regarding the renewal of exemption applications, I'm told by Brent Hasser, who I talk to or text just about every day, that, um, Senate Bill 685 is sitting on the governor's desk and should be signed at any, any time. So, once that is signed, um, we do intend to do a mailing so that our seniors and our disabled persons and vets know that they need, need not do anything this year. Um, those are a lot of the phone calls that we're receiving, and, um, you know, we continue to keep up with the Recorder's Office. Everything is on schedule with regard to the tax cycle. Uh, we're beginning to work with Rashawn on the budget, so, um, I think Ken is on the line. I'll be working, um, with him and Melissa to give them estimates as to where our assessed values are going to be, uh, so they can work on levies and, and so forth. But, uh, everything here is running smoothly, and I, at this point, don't anticipate opening to the public, um, probably till the third week of June, possibly the end of June. Um, there's not a real need for that. We have, uh, we've been working with our assessors, we're meeting with them via WebEx, uh, every two weeks, and everything seems to be going, as I said, um, very smoothly at this point. I don't know if there are any questions, or if you want to wait till the end.
Okay. And, uh, I just want to say thank you for that report. As each voice would say, thank you for helping us, Rhonda. Beth Adams?
Uh, Mary Kato has her hand up. I'd like...
Good morning, again. Uh, just as far as the State's Attorney's Office is concerned, uh, with the courts opening more, obviously, we have brought more employees back, uh, into the office. Uh, we are, uh, trying to strike a prudent balance, uh, between allowing people to work at home where we can and bringing them in. Uh, having the laptops and Carpal, the case management system, does help us to allow people to work from home a little more, actually significantly more than we would have had we not had that system. So, we very much appreciate the fact that the county board, um, financed that, and it was providence, I think, that it came in when it did, and we had the laptops that we needed. In addition, we, too, are adding extensions to the cubicles for the secretaries. We are, um, we have arranged to have additional sanitation once a week of our offices, uh, and we have required everyone to wear face masks if they are outside of their cubicles and their offices. We have placed, um, hand sanitizer everywhere, as well as antiseptic sprays, uh, to clean as much as possible, and posted, uh, a tremendous amount of reminder signage as to social distancing, not together in crowds, to wash their hands.
So...
All right. Anything else, Mary?
Not unless anyone has questions.
Beth?
Uh, we have David DuBois.
David, that's right. You're on. Unmuted talk.
All right, good morning. Um, first of all, I know the department would like to express our condolences to the Walsh family. Um, Executive Walsh, um, was always a good friend to, to our, to our office, and we will miss him. Um, the department has maintained normal business operations, again, with a few exceptions. Um, we've combined that with limited-in-office employees and employees working remotely with the field work. Effective Monday, this past Monday, we began a phased approach, um, for the return to office of our employees, and what this means is it includes the return of additional employees and allowing limited public access to our office on the first floor, um, for permit-related activities. Uh, you know, the health and safety of our employees, it's been our top priority, um, in the combination with that public access, limited public access. We're continuing to provide the business through, you know, a really effective use of the SmartCo web portal, um, which has been really good, uh, for allowing a lot of work to be done remotely. Webmail, VPN access, cell phones, iPads, WebEx, a variety of different pieces of technology, um, that have allowed us to do this. Um, we've also, just with the, the staff in the office, we've implemented policies, again, with regarding the masking, social distancing, we've been rotating staff, and, you know, following all the guidelines from, you know, HR, the Health Department, as well as, you know, the state and IDPH, um, and the CDC. Um, you know, all of our divisions, we've been busy, and I just want to give you a few numbers just to illustrate this. Since March 23rd, um, our Development Services Division has, we've received over 800 building permit applications, we've issued over 400 building permits, and we've performed over 1,200 inspections. And, uh, our Resource Recovery Energy Division, again, has been working on the RNG plant design pipeline offtaker agreements, and some other things related to that matter. But they also have IEP delegated activities, and we've done 90 unpermitted site inspections as well as 38 permitted site inspections. Our Community Development Division continues to work, um, with the Continue of Care, the Health Department EMA, on alternative housing, um, for those affected by COVID-19, but has also continued work with the CARES Act funding that, um, comes to different programs that we administer. Um, our Code Division's been really busy, and again, it's opened 225 cases and closed 121 cases. I, I do want to touch on one topic that Nick brought up, is that, uh, given the circumstances of this week, we do monitor that daily, and, you know, depending upon certain circumstances, we either will refrain, um, from some field work. Um, we also advise our staff, again, as, to be observant, and if they feel uncomfortable or unsafe at any given time, um, to refrain, excuse me, from any inspections out in the field, and, uh, just to discuss with their manager, and we reevaluate and assess. Um, so, but, just in summary, I kind of want to say, you know, we're, we're implementing a return-to-office plan, not, it's not, I wouldn't call it return to work, because all of our employees have been working. Um, we've been rotating staff through since March, and, uh, really have done an effective job of working remotely as well as with field work, and we have maintained business operations. Um, and again, it would not be possible without all the hard work of our dedicated employees in the office, and I would like to thank them for their hard work. So, I'll take questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that report. Who else do we have? Yep?
Um, Mike Shea.
Who?
Mike Shea.
Mike Shea, yeah. We'll have him on next, I guess. Mike, are you there?
Hello. Uh, first, uh, obviously, our department extend our, our condolences to Larry and his family. When I think about Larry, I think about a million kindnesses, uh, known and unknown that, that, uh, he performed, uh, that I, that I was privileged to see, so, um, we will miss him. Um, so, going forward, ICT staff, with a few exceptions, uh, have returned to work, uh, or I shouldn't say returned to work, returned to location, going to David's well-placed point. Uh, they are back on site, uh, for COVID-19 issues. Uh, we've, obviously, we've, we've been working on WebEx and, and getting work-from-home instituted. We are looking at, uh, the next things that we can do to, to better propel, prepare us for telework ongoing. Um, you know, in case this were to come back, or we were to experience something that we're, would require longer, uh, or another work-from-home situation, uh, we think that there's some things that we could do to be better prepared, but work with the CARES Funding Committee, uh, to outline those and, and, uh, give explanations for them. Um, real quick, uh, State's Attorney already mentioned case management. Uh, you know, it is up and operating, and one of the big things there is that the Motorola Carpal interface, uh, is operating, and I believe State's Attorney will mandate that, uh, for all law enforcement agencies, uh, in a month or so. Uh, we have a number of them already using it, but that makes that transmission from law enforcement to State's Attorney also much more efficient. We're very glad that that's, uh, underway. Uh, the ERP is ongoing. Uh, we have experienced, uh, some delays, uh, because of COVID-19. We'll need to discuss those, uh, again, probably with the CARES Committee as well as others. Uh, we're still, uh, anticipating go-live for all functions, uh, for the coming budget year, or for, for the coming fiscal year, 2021. Um, a big thing there is that the budget portion goes live Monday. We will be go, we will actually be operating live for budget planning, uh, within the new finance system. Uh, I cannot tell people, uh, how much work and effort Rashawn and, and a number of the people around her, uh, with her have put into that effort to make that, to make that happen. Uh, that's a big deal, um, and then we'll be switching some services over to Managed Services, and, uh, very pleased to be going live with a portion of that. Uh, the pay, the payroll, uh, project kicks off today. Uh, we'll be having a meeting with the project manager and the, uh, selected vendor, Kronos. Um, as far as the courthouse goes, we are now physically in the courthouse installing equipment in the IDF, MDFs, and other locations around the building. Um, we've got a pretty decent-sized crew from CDW, uh, here on site, helping us with that, so I have about a half, half a dozen people, uh, going at that full speed. Uh, as far as the Memorial Day weekend, uh, people remember, we had a, a phone system was severely damaged, as well as a number of other things. All of the phone system equipment has been repaired, has been replaced. All those replacements are installed and operating. I, we didn't see a significant interruption in operations from that, uh, thanks to my, to my staff, really working, working hard. Uh, we do still have an overhead link that's a backup between here and Emco, uh, that backup... That backup, one end of that backup link was on the penthouse that was torn off of Emco. So, we're still waiting on quotes to replace that backup link and we still have an AT&amp;T fiber connection issue that has not been fully resolved, but is in progress. So, that, just a quick update, I was asked to give a quick update on status of our projects and that's it.
Well, all right then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Mark, I got Mary here from the coroner's office.
Oh, good. Yeah. Here's Lori Summers to do her report from the coroner's.
Down at the other building.
That's okay.
We're continuing on with what we put into place to begin with and we're following all our protocol and continuing to follow our protocol. Thank God, none of our, none of our employees have been COVID positive. The three people that were showing signs and symptoms went in and were tested and they were done with PCR and all were negative. So, we're going to continue doing what we're doing. We're still, you have people working from home. It's working out quite well. It hasn't interfered with getting things done. We're still getting done what we need to get done. So, you know, as we move forward through this next phase, you know, we'll just keep an eye on what's happening. You know, I have a big concern that we may see an increase in cases as well with all these folks being out. So, I think, you know, I would rather err on the side of caution here and I think the deputy coroners are also in agreement with that as well as the office. Yeah. So, that's it.
All right. Thanks for your efforts to get over to the chair and give us this report.
Joe, Julie, may I ask a question? I've had my hand up.
Well, we're going to take questions after all of the, all of the reports are in. So, you're in line to answer your question, but it'll be after we get done with the reports.
I, and I'm making a list of the board members who have their hands up as well as the department heads. I have Jeff Ronaldson, who
Yes.
I believe wants to give a report as well. And if you've already given your report, if you could just put your hand down, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Jeff, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good morning, everyone. Just very briefly, not much has changed for the DOT since last month. All services remain provided. Admin, again, is probably only about a third occupancy in the building, but it's only because our field engineers are out on the job. And we still have our permit and project managers working remotely, so that's been pretty good for keeping the office light. As far as maintenance, I do still have two zones. I staggered shifts just so they're not all congregating at the time clock at the beginning and at the end of the days. And then all of our projects under construction remain at full force with the exception of Brig Street north of I-80. We've had about a two-month delay there because Nycor has not been able to get into the houses to make final connections due to COVID. So, we're hoping we can work with the contractor and as they're finally getting back in there, maybe make up some time there, but time will tell. So, like I said, that's our short date. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jeff. I see that Harold Damron is with us today. Harold, you have a report? I think you're muted. If you're giving your report, you're muted. Harold? Okay, Beth, who do you have?
I know that Harold's provided us with a written report that we have forwarded on to all board members as well as Susan Flosner. She doesn't really have a report. She provided a flyer for the board members to distribute in your areas for people that are looking for jobs. She has an updated flyer that was sent to you as well. Outside of that, I have board members and Jackie Trainier, followed by Mike Frizzalone and then Julie Berkowitz, Mimi Cowan and Annette Parker.
Okay. I think, I think Jackie was up first, right?
I apologize. I see Harold is on. I don't know if he has comments.
I hear Beth. Sorry about that. Good morning, everybody. As Beth indicated, I did send a written report that you should have received this morning via email, so I won't go into great detail. I just wanted to highlight a couple of quick things. We, we continue to work on distributing PPE to a host of public safety agencies, long-term care facilities. This is a joint effort with the Health Department and the Silver Cross EMS system. We have some of our personnel that have been actually handling the receipt of PPE, tracking it, inventory, distributing it and actually getting it delivered in the hands of those different locations. To date, we've distributed about 650,000 pieces of PPE to those entities. So, that's been a big effort. It continues to be one for at least the short term. Eventually, we need to phase that out and get these organizations back to the regular supply chain, but we don't want to do that and leave them short. So, we're working on a plan to eventually phase that out and then be prepared for any future need. Last item I'll just touch on briefly is, as you know, we are under the, the fourth consecutive disaster proclamation by the governor for COVID. And then earlier this week, the governor did include Will County in a separate disaster proclamation due to the, the civil disturbance issues that have been happening across the state. So, we're currently under two distinct disaster proclamations. Beyond that, again, I'll, I'll just allow my written report to stand. If anybody has questions, I'll still be on the line later. Thank you.
Thank you, Harold, for your report. Now, just wanted to, that wraps up everybody's reports.
Good morning. Can I? This is Maggie, the administrator at Sunny Hill. I'd like to give a brief report.
I'm sorry I missed you. Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. I just want to share where we're at here at Sunny Hill with regards to what's going on in relation to COVID-19. Certainly, we have seen a flattening of the curve as regards to development and the prevalence of any new positive cases. I'm happy to report that currently we have six positive residents on our dedicated COVID-19 unit. Of the six, all are presenting asymptomatic, meaning that none of them have any symptoms, yet they are still testing positive. Twelve residents have already converted to a negative status and we have no residents in the hospital currently with any COVID-related issues. We have one employee positive that's still in quarantine but doing well at home. And certainly, we have no new resident cases since 5/21, which is approximately two weeks. And we have had no new staff cases since 5/16, which is almost three weeks. So, we are certainly moving in the right direction. I'm going to make the report fairly brief because I will forward an email to the board members because there is a lot of updates relevant to, you know, the nursing homes specifically. However, the most pressing issue right now for us here at Sunny Hill is the emergency rule that was issued last week by IDPH and the governor with regards to mandating COVID-19 testing and compliance in all long-term care facilities. The testing has to be done on all residents and staff. We've been busy developing our plan and how we are implementing that. In fact, today is day two of testing for all of the residents and staff. The requirement is that we have to attain a baseline for everybody and this is called a point prevalence survey that involves PCR testing of everybody. Our biggest issue here has actually been the procurement of the actual test kits themselves in order to be able to get this completed. Since we have approximately 210 staff and 100-plus residents, 140 residents, we need to test everybody. So, that, as we're, as I'm speaking, we're actually in the middle of, of getting that completed. Getting that baseline is a snapshot in time in terms of where everybody is currently. However, the requirement is going to be going forward that, once we test residents and staff, we are going to need to continue to test staff every week. So, again, next week, you know, Wednesday or Thursday, we're going to have to test 210 staff and do that on an ongoing basis. Now, the issue there is somewhat, number one, making sure that we have the test kits available to do this. Illinois Department of Public Health has provided us with the test kits to do the overall baseline testing. However, we, it will be our responsibility going forward to provide those. We've actually been able to send those to the IDPH lab in Chicago to get the results. Usually, the turnaround time is going to be 48 to 72 hours. But once we get those, this is something that's going to have to be ongoing. One of the issues that we've encountered, obviously, in other nursing homes nationwide has been the availability and supply of PPE. Of course, if we're going to be testing this many people on an ongoing basis, that's going to, you know, deplete our supplies very rapidly. So, that's something that we're currently looking at and aware of. And certainly, this is not specific just to Sunny Hill. This is nationwide. All nursing homes are going to have to do this on an ongoing basis because based on the fact that staff are considered the vectors, the staff are going to need this testing weekly. We will not be testing our residents on a weekly basis. We'll be just getting this baseline on, on our residents. So, there is quite a bit more that's actually going on in the long-term care sector, so I will include those details rather than take up time here to do that and forward that information to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Mark had to step away a minute. I know we have Jerry Killian from the Public Defender's Office, but he's having issues with his microphone and I'm not quite sure if he's going to be able to speak. I don't see that I can get his microphone on. I apologize for that. I think we'll have to move.
I could maybe call his phone and he could talk through my microphone.
Okay. If you want to do that.
Let me try that. I'll get, I'll get back to you in a second.
Okay. Okay.
The Health Department?
I do not see anyone from the Health Department. I don't think there is anyone from any other departments. If there, if there's anyone else that wants to speak, if they want to go ahead and unmute at this point, because I'm not.
Hi, this is Kathleen Burke.
Good morning, Kathleen.
Good morning. If it's okay, I just wanted to give a brief update on the impact of COVID-19 on substance use in our community and make people aware that for a couple of weeks, the treatment agencies in Will County were not accepting patients because of COVID-19. They are starting to refer directly to Stepping Stone and Brandon House in Cantino are accepting people now, but their capacity is cut and impaired because of arrangements that they had to meet internally, physically, in order to accept patients. This has had an impact on our overdoses. We've seen people relapsing because of the inability to get treatment, but also the impact of having virtual treatment being rendered. Outpatient treatment has gone to a virtual capacity as well, as opposed to individual meeting or, you know, real-life meetings and that's had an impact. We did not, COVID-19 is in direct opposite of the type of treatment that you want to render to a behavioral health patient. We were, we are starting now to work in the motels where some of the folks were relocated. That funding has run out and now we're dealing with, well, what now? Where do people go? Because the treatment homes were asking people to leave their facility and they needed to be rehoused. So, I have a, a fund that is able to support people who are looking for treatment for a short period of time and we've been able to do that. But I am not able to continually keep somebody in a hotel. So, I think we need to, I know there's a conversation tomorrow about this in more detail, but I did want to make the board aware that in our community, we've, we've taken some steps back when it comes to the opioid epidemic, but also behavioral health in general. Could not be anticipated nor was it unavoidable, but I think we have some work to do as we move forward. And I would like, I'm going to be working closely with the housing folks to make sure that we don't, that we can find the funding to keep people in a safe place. We've started a rapid deployment group. I was funded through the state to do that, that is going to get in the lock zone to the folks that are at high risk in the hotels and in the Tem City and some of the locations throughout Joliet that are of high risk. So, I just wanted to know that we're responding through my grant, but there has been no additional COVID dollar CARES money that's been allocated towards this and I think the not-for-profits in the community have suffered the, a lot and that we should be aware of that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I do see Anthony Marzano. I don't know if you have an update that you would like to provide to the board?
Good morning. 911 is, not a lot to add. We are beginning to phase staff back into the office. We expect to be completely back to normal, if you will, in terms of office staff and office hours, no later than the end of the month. We are continuing to process information as it is received from the Health Department and our surrounding 911 systems with respect to COVID-positive information in order to protect and inform our emergency responders. We're also lending some additional resources and staying on top of the, the civil disturbance issues that have already been referenced. We're exchanging a lot of information with surrounding 911 systems and law enforcement authorities to make sure that, that we're prepared to support the responders that are having to deal with the frontline issues associated with those events. We're working on a couple of items with respect to potential CARES funding and trying to work through some of the challenges that have been presented in that respect, but otherwise, all is well at 911. And I'd like to also add our, our deep sense of loss with respect to County Executive Walsh and send our condolences to his family at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Jerry Killian is still trying to get on, so I will probably go for questions. Jackie, you were first for questions?
Yeah, I have a few of them and maybe they'll cover some of the questions that other people had based on the report. First, I just want to say though, thank you to all the staff for everything that you're doing. I understand, as we've all said before, this is a difficult time, unprecedented, certainly stressful and just appreciate the hard work. So, first department I'm going to start with is the Clerk's Office. I just wanted to clarify who is getting the vote-by-mail applications because I've heard some differing things online and in other groups. If I heard Chuck correctly, it's anyone that voted in 2018, 2019, or 2020. And I just like that clarified. And I can read through all my questions and then, you know, however you guys want to go to the answer part. For Maggie and Harold, Maggie, I believe I reached out to you last week about N95 masks because I do have a source for someone who has over a million of them. Just wanted to put that out there because I know PPE is probably still hard to come by. And while I appreciate Harold doing everything he can to take care of our departments, there may be people or organizations in our county that need these kinds of resources and I'm just guessing that they contact the Health Department. And so, I'm, I'm just sharing that information that those masks are available locally. They're here, not on a boat from China. They're here, not on a boat from China. David Dubois, the numbers on the permits, are those numbers pretty comparable to other numbers that we've had in past years at this time? Are they up or are they down? And last but not least, I'm just a little disappointed that Sue Olenek isn't here from the Health Department. And I realize she may be on some other very, very important calls, but I just would have thought maybe there'd be a surrogate in case there were any questions specific to the Health Department. And I am done, and will take my answers. Thank you.
Well, I'll start, Jackie, since you asked our office first. With regard to the Clerk's Office, you said who gets the vote-by-mail applications? The legislation requires anybody who applied to vote in the primary election, in the 2019 consolidated election, and in the 2018 general election. So anyone who applied to vote. So that's a little bit broader than anybody who actually voted.
Yeah, I don't really understand that statement, and that was my problem, Chuck. Can you give some more teeth to the term "applied to vote"?
Well, anybody who would have filled out a... In most instances, it would be anybody who filled out, for example, a vote-by-mail application and received a vote-by-mail ballot, but then didn't return it. That's a person who applied to vote, was given a ballot, but then decided not to vote for some reason. That person is still entitled to receive a vote-by-mail ballot.
So to clarify, not registered to vote, they had to have asked for an application either at the polls or...
No, they have to be registered to vote, registered voters.
If we're asking, what is the definition of "applied"?
That's what I'm asking for. And Rachel, thank you, because it was explained to me early on, it was anyone who voted in any of those elections. And then other people said, "No, no, it's just people who applied to vote by mail during that time." So just please be clear. Thank you.
If anybody who voted in those elections is correct, but then there are additional people, for example, like the people that I just indicated, anyone who would have applied to obtain a vote-by-mail ballot, who did not vote that ballot, they too are eligible to receive an application. So essentially, it's anybody who voted in those elections, because to vote, you had to apply to vote, and then anybody who applied to vote but then chose not to vote. And in those instances, it's vote-by-mail.
Thank you, Chuck. That is much clearer. I appreciate it.
David, did you have an answer for Jackie?
Yes, I do. The numbers I have before me, real quick, I don't have the numbers, for example, for COVID, but just let's talk building permits and inspections for the month of May. Month of May inspections performed in 2019, there were 673. In May of 2020, there were 594. So it's down 12%.
That's okay. That's good, given the economic craziness that's occurring.
And permits submitted, May 2019, 471. May 2020, 445. So permits submitted is down 5.5%. The issuance is down a little bit more, but the inspections and permits submitted are down a little bit, but considering everything that's been going on, pretty good.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Jackie. This is Maggie. I just want to kind of clarify with regards to the N95 masks. Appreciate you forwarding that information, and I did have our inventory control person reach out to AJS, and he did clarify, he doesn't have N95 masks available, he only has procedural masks.
Thank you.
The item that we're really in need of, or the two items that we're mostly in need of, is the N95 masks, obviously, because they're mandated or required in our COVID unit, and then gowns. So those are the two hot items that we need. And of course, we are looking to accumulate a surplus supply or stockpile, because as we go into September and we go into our flu season again, I want to make sure that we're not in a similar predicament that we're in currently. So I'm sure us and every other nursing home out there is trying to do the same.
Thank you so much, Maggie. He had told me that they were N95. I wouldn't know an N95 from a hole in the wall.
Absolutely, and I don't think most people would. So again, it's one of those things that's unique to what we do in nursing, so of course, we know the difference. But I appreciate the referral. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Jackie, can I just jump in and make sure I clarify one other thing, if that's okay?
Sure.
So again, just to be clear, I wanted to make certain that we kind of clarified the definition of "applied to vote." What we're talking about here, in all instances, we're talking about registered voters who actually filled out an application for a ballot. I think that is more accurate. So when you go to a polling place, you sign your name, that's an application for a ballot. When you go to an early voting place, you fill out an application for a ballot. When you apply for a vote-by-mail ballot, that's an application for a ballot. In all of those instances, you are registered, you're a registered voter. So we're not talking about people who just apply to vote or apply to register to vote. We're talking about people who filled out applications for ballots. And I just wanted to make absolutely...
No, seriously, and not to interrupt, but I don't think most of the people in the world, I know I did, would never have considered, when I go in and sign that paper, that that was an application to vote.
It's an application for a ballot, correct, right.
Yeah, and people don't realize that, and that's why I wanted you to really, really clarify what that means.
Right, and I felt that maybe my language probably wasn't as clear as it could have been initially, so...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Do you have a follow-up question to what Chuck just said? Or put me in at the end, that's fine. I'll raise my hand.
Mark, this is Nick. Can I make a quick comment?
Okay.
Just a quick comment on the PPE issue. As we've said, we're having a CARES meeting tomorrow, but the county has purchased a larger quantity of masks. There are lots of sources, and a lot of times, they've panned out to not be what we need because there's different qualities of mask. But at least from the Executive's Office perspective, and Harold Dameron and his staff have done a phenomenal job of stepping in because they have the ability, they have the skills, because they do this kind of stuff all the time in emergencies, to distribute things, as does the Health Department. But in this case, the Health Department agreed to defer to the EMA or allow the EMA to take that, and they've done a great job. And they're not just taking care of county people. I think at one point, they had served like 200 and some different entities, and they can tell you specifically in how many thousands. But the hope is that we're going to buy a significant quantity of PPE for distribution to all the county agencies, municipalities. We've provided them to nursing homes and other folks, and potentially even further than that. So where there's a need, we're going to try to meet it and stockpile. So, but it's... I just... The Health Department has, early on, had a certain ability to obtain things because if there was limited supply, but the EMA has been the one carrying out the distribution. So you'll hear more about it, but I just want everybody to know that our intent is to buy a large quantity. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick. It's good to know what the process is that's going on behind, so when people do come to us, we have some sort of answer for them. So thank you.
And thank you both for your comments. Beth has informed me that Mike Frislon is next, then Julie, Mimi, Annette, Gretchen, and Ray, in that order. So let's hear from Mike Frislon.
Thanks, Mark. And I too want to thank all of the departments that are doing a super job, especially at land use, making it seem like COVID isn't affecting them at all, the way they're getting the work done. Great job, guys. So a couple of questions as well. Back to the vote-by-mail. At our last meeting of this sort, when Lauren reported to us, she said that there was no way that we could handle a total vote-by-mail. And so that concerns me. I know you mentioned earlier, Chuck, that you were starting to get things together. I mean, are we anticipating of having all of the precinct voting locations that we had last time open? And how are we going to do vote-by-mail if, in fact, we're overwhelmed, like Lauren thought we might be? My other question is to Tim Grophy. Since we put our COVID plan into effect for the four installments, we're hearing issues at banks and online that people weren't able to pay a quarter. The banks were telling them, "No, you had to pay a half," or they wouldn't accept it. And then online wasn't set up, and I don't know exactly what day that was that they tried. Have we rectified both of those situations so people can pay a quarter of their payment or half of the first half of their payment? Has that been dealt with? So those are my two questions. Thanks.
Yes, Mark, if I may answer?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Mike, the banks are not able to take anything but the full installment. The board action in May was too late to get those changes put through to the banks for this June installment, June payment.
You mean a full half? A full half?
Right. They can't take... They have to take only the full installment that was billed.
Right, the whole installment.
But taxpayers can go online and do it. We have instructions that we send them. Those that have trouble, call. We walk them through it in person, or we email them a set of instructions, and thousands have successfully applied for payment in the smaller amount. So it's working for many. Some are going to have trouble. It's just a matter of the volume, not everybody's going to get through.
Do the banks have that information to refer people to pay online if they want to pay a quarter?
They've been told that they cannot take the partial payment and to refer them to our office.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next would be, actually, to follow up on the question with regard to a full vote-by-mail election. I think when Lauren was talking to you at the last committee of the hall, I think the concern was that the General Assembly or the governor might mandate that we mail a ballot out to every single registered voter in Will County. That would be in excess of 450,000 ballots to every voter. The General Assembly did not do that. Instead, they required that we email or that we mail out vote-by-mail applications. We fully expect that to drive up the interest in vote-by-mail, as has COVID-19 in the pandemic. We fully expect that that is going to increase participation in the vote-by-mail program. You know, right now, we're anticipating a response of up to 125,000 vote-by-mail ballots. That's what we're preparing for right now, to process the return of 125,000 actual ballots. That is going to be the high watermark for Will County. Prior to that was the 2018 general election, which was 30,000 ballots sent and 27,000 returned. So obviously, we're expecting a lot more than that. It's going to tax our staff, but they're up to the task. We've been preparing in terms of purchasing equipment that'll increase our printing capacity, adding election judge staff that'll increase our capacity to assemble these vote-by-mail ballots, mail them, and to process them when they're actually returned. And the other question that you had is, will these other precinct locations still be in play in the November election? And the answer is yes. We expect them to, and they will be. Now, again, we're right now getting a pretty positive response from all of our polling places. The vast majority of them have said they are interested in returning as a polling place. Some have concerns about the pandemic and whether they want to continue as such. For those who do not want to continue as a polling place, we'll find an alternate polling place for them. But we expect to have all of our roughly 245 polling places up and running on Election Day, in addition to all of our early voting locations as well.
Isn't the governor looking at making it a school holiday so you could get back into school?
Yeah, he did make it a school... The legislation actually does make it a school holiday, so that gives us some flexibility with regard to schools. And again, we can cover a lot of ground with one school. It really helps us when we have, for example, a church that may say, "Hey, we don't want to be a vote-by-mail location right now. We're too concerned about the pandemic." If there's a school in the area that hasn't been participating, obviously, that's one of the first places we'll look to replace that location. We don't like to change locations unless we absolutely have to. Voters are very accustomed to going where they go on Election Day. They don't like it when voting, when polling places are changed. We try our best to keep them where they are. But again, the pandemic really kind of threw things up in the air. We had six or seven polling places bailed on us at the last minute in the primary election. And we expect to lose a handful more, maybe more than a handful, in the general election. But we are looking for alternate locations. For those who have said, "We're definitely out."
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank both of you for your question and answer, Mike and Chuck. Next, I just wanted to mention that we can take a little break away from questions. I have the order. We're going to have the order and come back to you. Sue Olenek is in house now and joined the meeting, and I think we should have her report now in case any of you have questions pertaining to the Health Department. And you already knew you had questions pertaining to the Health Department, but we haven't heard her report yet. So Sue, can you join us now and give your report?
Mike, Mark, let me see if this is Sue.
Okay.
Sue, is this you?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Can everyone hear her?
Jackie, I can hear her just fine.
Thank you.
Okay. I apologize for not being on the call. I received a cancellation, and I honestly thought this was a transportation meeting, so I was not on the call, and I was not prepared to speak, but that's okay. I have been sending out my reports on Tuesdays, Thursdays. You would have received my most recent report yesterday. I don't really have much more to speak to, except that we are going to be submitting our large grant tomorrow for the 4.9 million. That will be done on time, and we are working through all of the math and machinations that we need to bring these grants and appropriations to the Board of Health this month, as well as the County Board. Any questions for me?
Okay, thanks for your report. If you happen to come up with a question for Sue, you can raise your hand, and we'll include you on the list of who's next. And on the list of who's next, Julie Berkowitz, you are on.
Thank you, Mark. I have a question about Lori's presentation. Thank you all for being here today. I really appreciate it. For Lori, I was wondering, she mentioned their previous protocol and the procedures they have. I don't recall seeing any of that in a previous report, so I'm just wondering if they might be able to provide the board with those details? And then also, several other surrounding counties, their coroners have made announcements regarding the impact of COVID on the community, and this is in particular with suicide and drug overdoses. I have not seen anything from our coroner regarding whether or not there's been an increase in any type of impact in the data. I would suspect that it would be similar to what the Kane County and DuPage coroners are experiencing. So I was wondering if Lori could briefly address that and provide us with that information. Thank you so much.
I'm here. I'm sorry, I was talking without unmuting. Yeah, Julie, actually, I gave a... The last committee of the hall, I gave a complete report, and I will go back into that again for you. As far as asking about the increase in suicides and drug overdoses, we are, as I spoke with Kathleen Burke, and Kathleen can speak to this as well, we have something called a pending list. And until we get back our toxicology on these cases, I can tell you, we have 15... I can tell you we have 15 pending possible ODs with more just added in. But it takes up to six weeks to get those back. So we have put out the numbers that we have. I actually did put it out to a lady who contacted me two weeks ago and she was aware of what our pendings were. So as soon as we get those, we will get those, get those out to you. Plus, the girl that keeps track of all that stuff is working remotely. And we have had a huge increase in getting permitting for cremations. So our priority is to get our decedent taken care of first and foremost. So hopefully, they've answered your question. And Julie, I think sitting right in front of me that I gave the last time, Julie. So in the beginning, when all this started, we put together a protocol. And anyone that works in the field, which is our deputy coroner, and anyone with a suspected case, which we treat every call into the field as a suspected case just as we would have any other disease that was out there in the past. They are to wear gowns, gloves, goggles, booties, and N95 masks, which we carry and did before. And they're to be carried in their field bag. We double bag the decedent's bodies in two-way bags and transport back to the morgue. On the autopsies, it is, again, gown, gloves, goggles, and booties. They use the N95 as well as face shield. At the morgue, when we complete, we will complete our examination, whether external or autopsy, using appropriate personal protective equipment and minimizing the number of people who come in contact with the body. Meaning that, you know, at times, there are police departments that come in and their, their techs will take the pictures. And if we can avoid doing that, we do. We just try to keep it to a bare minimum within the actual autopsy room. Specimens, any specimens that we take, which has nothing many, since we do not take jurisdiction over COVID cases that are diagnosed in a hospital or in a long-term care facility where there has been a death. We try to send them directly to the funeral home because that prevents four more moves, if that makes sense to you. And it prevents exposing anyone else as far as our deputy coroners and anyone else that will be around. So that has worked out quite well for the county and the hospitals have been phenomenal in cooperating with us. We are communicating with the funeral homes and letting them know if these are COVID cases or suspected COVID cases. We also obtained the temporary morgue, which was put into place, boy, quite a while ago now. The pathologist and the pathology tech's protocol is that we are keeping any suspected COVID-19 cases. We are doing some of the nasal pharyngeal class. And we do a rapid and then we do a PCR. We only have a few of those because, again, we're not taking jurisdiction over, over any COVID cases. And if someone dies in the hospital or the funeral home, most of them have been tested so we know if they're positive or negative. And again, I'm just going to reiterate, we do not exercise jurisdiction over confirmed COVID-19 cases. So hopefully, that answered your, your question, Julie.
All right, thanks for the question.
Hi, Mark. Could I, this is Kathleen. Could I?
Sure.
Julie, yesterday at the Public Health and Safety Committee, I submitted a report about the impact of, that what's been going on in the community over the last quarter since COVID-19 came. And yes, we have seen an uptick in overdoses and overdose deaths. We have seen an uptick in overdoses that have not ended in death. I think that's important to think about relapses are as significant as an overdose death. And that's what I mentioned earlier on the call is my primary focus right now because we have had our treatment agencies closed. We've had our treatment modalities changed and people are suffering because of that. And so we are, we launched a rapid response team to go into locations where there are a high number of active users to deliver naloxone because that is the most effective way to keep people alive. And we were funded for that. And I also have 10 recovery coaches in our community working at all the agencies in Will County to continue contact with an individual who's in recovery to lessen the chance that they will relapse. Our warm handoffs in our hospitals have stopped because of COVID, which is totally understandable. But it has been reported by the public health department, that the state public health department, that COVID-19 is in direct conflict with best practice for anyone with a substance use problem. So what we haven't done and what we don't normally do in Will County is make the press. I don't necessarily know that that stops us in any way. It just makes it apparent to everybody else that we're having a problem. So we tend to keep our business to ourselves and manage it. Lori and I are in contact to manage what's been going on. But it, it is a problem. That's, that's what it is. Thank you.
If I could add one more thing, Mark, if possible?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, one of the things that we have that other county's done has Kathleen Burke. And, you know, those years ago when we put Kathleen into place, this is, this is her expertise. And again, her and I have been in contact with each other consistently. So, you know, and we are lucky to have her.
All right. And thank you, Dr. Burke, and thank you, Lori Summers, for your answers. And finally, we're getting back to our questions, our questioners list. It gives me a great pleasure to look to the screen and say, to Mimi Cowan, what's up, doc?
Thanks, Mark. I just wanted to go back. I, I think this question would be for Mary Tatro, but I'm not sure if somebody else could address it. Back to the beginning of the meeting when we voted to have a special meeting, I'm wondering if someone could give a brief rundown of what's going to happen and like a timeline for, just so that we're all kind of on the same page and have the same understanding since we're all here together right now?
Sure. This is Mary Tatro. I can answer that. So I would encourage you to schedule a meeting as soon as possible as there is quite a bit of business that needs to be taken care of. But the first thing would be to hold a meeting where you would declare a vacancy. After that vacancy is declared, you're required to notify both political, the central committees of both political parties. There is no statutory time period as to when you could call a second meeting. So there are a couple different ways you could do it. You could either, well, I guess arguably, as I sit here thinking about it, you could, let's just, for example, say you called a special meeting for Monday. You could have on the agenda to declare the vacancy. And perhaps you could add an appointment, which you could not do that day because you have to notify the parties. But you could then continue the meeting, maybe even till the next day, since this is rather urgent, and make the appointment the next day. Otherwise, you would have to call a second special meeting and give two days' notice. And then at the next meeting, you would take nominations to appoint an acting county executive.
Thank you very much, Mary.
All right, thank you, Mimi, and thank you, Mary Tatro, for your help. Annette Parker is next on our list. What's your got, Annette?
Hello, thank you, Mark. I have two questions. First would be for the clerk. It's not like we're going back one election cycle. Is there anything to prevent us from going back two cycles to 2016 for the vote by mail ballots? And then I have a question for land use, David Dubois, or possibly Sue Olenek. I'm not quite sure who can help answer this. But I know our policy for Will County is to give a notification or some type of information to first responders prior to them going to a household who possibly has an infectious disease before they enter it. I wanted to know if there was any conversation or discussion of giving other Will County departments that same consideration before they enter a house. I know there's some, you know, land use divisions that have to go into. I know the coroner's office, Lori Summers spoke at Public Health about that. And I just wanted to know, is there something we can do to get other departments that same consideration? Thank you.
This is David speaking. I will say is that one of the precautions that we have taken is that we do not do inspections in occupied residential structures. What we have been doing to accommodate those that are deemed to be very time-sensitive or ones that we can, you know, have other issues, we have done virtual inspections, either through video or photographs or otherwise. So we have been trying to accommodate, you know, those, like you said, those inspections where we can't get inside. We have not had discussions with the, you know, the notification of our office with regarding, you know, the COVID positive. And I would probably suggest is that that's an issue that would probably have to be taken up either by the executive's office, state's attorney's office, or others, that it's a little bit above us on the legality of that. Because I know that that's been discussed as perhaps being an issue.
Hi, this is Sue. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello? Hi, this is Sue from the health department. I am in agreement with, with David as far as needing some legal counsel. As it is, disclosing this kind of information to, to anybody other than for agency use or on a specific need to know is not typical. There are counties that are not sharing this information with even their 911 for their first responders. Actually, Lake County Health Department was in court a couple of weeks ago because their sheriff was suing the Lake County Health Department for not divulging this information. So it, this is protected health information. And, you know, we, we went through a couple of hoops here to assure that what we provide to the 911 center is lawful. And so I, I'd have to, you know, ask legal, but I don't think we can go any further than that. In addition to that, you know, our field staff, they, they are going out into the field. They are having contact with individuals. They're, of course, trying to limit their contact as much as possible. They're doing the social distancing. They are required to wear masks. But, you know, we don't tell them of all these cases either. This is protected health information. So I would have to have a discussion with state's attorney and, and see what the efficacy of that would be.
Okay, Mark, this is Lori.
Yeah.
And I just, Annette, what we have been recommending, and I have been on calls with some of the first responders as well through Silver Cross, and that indeed was one of their concerns. So the recommendations have been, and we should always do, to treat every home you walk into as though there is COVID. We did this, you know, you, you walk into a hospital or you do lab draws or you're out in the field and you're having to start an ID, you treat each person as if they have hepatitis C or HIV or anything like that. That is just best practice and that is what everyone is using. I hope that answered your question, Annette.
There was a discussion a few weeks ago with other counties and that's when I was really made aware that Will County does provide that information. So I just started thinking about other departments within Will County. And then, you know, I don't know what type of PPE all departments are given. So that was just another, something I was going to bring up.
All right. So everything's covered. Let's move on to the next question.
Actually, Annette, I had one question about with regard to going back further in the vote by mail process. The legislation that was passed requires the county clerks to go back only to the 28, through the 2018 general election. Going back further, you know, creates further complications with establishing, creating the databases. So we are going back, you know, through the, we are going back and complying with the, with the legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Hope that answers the question. Next on our questioners members list is Gretchen Fritz from District 5. Gretchen?
Hi, thank you. I actually have some other questions as well. The first couple probably could be answered by Beth. I had asked at the last meeting for a statement from the sheriff and/or the state's attorney about their enforcement or non-enforcement of business closures. And the sheriff said that he would be putting something out. I did not see that. So if it was in our email, I missed it. And so I just, looking for confirmation of whether that came out or not. The second question for Beth is can, can you send out a link to the property tax payment information? The, you know, the fact that they can pay half, half in June, half in August? A link to, the treasurer Brophy said it was going to be on our website or his website. And just something we can send to our constituents, because I'm still getting emails about that. And something that is, you know, something we can forward to our constituents. My next question could probably be answered by either Nick Palmer or Dave Tac or both. I'm wondering who is handling Joel Van Essen's workload and how's that going so far? I know it's only been a few days. And then Denise or whoever would know, how are, how are we going to handle replacing Joel, locating a replacement for Joel Van Essen? Thank you.
Gretchen, I have not seen any update from the sheriff from the last meeting. I will go back and I apologize. I dropped the ball on that one and I will get the information you wanted for that. Regarding the property tax link, it is on our county board main page that the property owners can pay half, give the dates and that. I can, I can put that into an email along with the link to the treasurer's website if you want so that you have that as well.
Mark, this is Tim Brophy.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
County board members, I just emailed you the instructions for taxpayers to go online and make those scheduled payments. They can schedule the payments out or they can make them, you know, personally, just go online each due date and make the quarter payment. And those attachments have specific instructions on how to change the system to accept the partial payment. It's in your, in your email boxes.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. And next question would be Rachel Manolo.
Mark, I, can I answer the other question from Gretchen?
Sure.
Gretchen asked about Joel Van Essen. As many of you know, he just left Friday. We've got a few other things going currently, but Joel was hired to help oversee some of the capital projects, the consolidation of maintenance and other things like that. At this point, the intent was to post for that position and fill that position, but we have not posted for that yet. But anybody who's been around county government knows there's a lot of rumors that just aren't true. But Joel's position is vacant at the moment. Dave Tac is continuing to do all the work he's been doing with the courthouse, which we've had issues with weather and civil disturbances and things like that. So he's pretty much got a full load and a half. So we are utilizing another management staff person from within the county to assist Dave in an interim basis. But there is no official replacement of Joel Van Essen. We haven't posted for that position yet. So any rumors to the contrary are just that rumors. But we will be post, our intent thus, at least at the present moment, is to post for that position and find a qualified person to continue that work. And we can have a discussion with county board on kind of scope of work as, you know, for the future, because there are still lots of work to be done with the courthouse. for the future, because there are still lots of work to be done with the courthouse and other capital projects and supervision of maintenance workers, so. But it's, there's a lot more in the details that aren't worth going into right here, so. But that's the plan right now, so thank you.
Nick, you may mention that Joel set up all the protocols and spreadsheets and reporting and putting tickets in, so all of that stuff is set up, so Mike and his crew can just follow those programs for right now, and we're good.
I mean, he has done, I'm not taking anything away from Joel. He has done a phenomenal job, and that's why we hired him. But there is still a number of projects that are ongoing, and Dave Tack can't do all that by himself. Dave, just for everyone's education, Dave Tack is the deputy chief of staff. Joel was under Dave's supervision, and then the maintenance workers, the Mike Miglerinis and the other maintenance guys are under, were under Joel's supervision. So there was a chain of command there, but we do have other projects, some that may move quicker and some that may move slower, but that's a management decision that has to be made, so.
All right. Thanks for your information, Nick. Ray Tummanello is next with a question.
Thank you very much. I would like to first say thank you, I know, to Ken Harris, Karen Hennessy, and Rashawn. They put together that report that I had asked last, at the last meeting, to talk about our finance discrepancies from 2019 to 2020, so we could start helping plan. When I received the report, I did notice a couple of things, and I just wanted to ask a question, just go on record, make sure that, you know, the county board and all of us are aware, in case we have to make some decisions moving forward. One of the things had to do with the local distribution fund, Fund 33569. It looked like May of 2018 was over $2 million, and this May was like only a $1,063,000. That's a loss of almost 50%. And I'm concerned, because moving forward, I mean, that's a big loss. Now, that could be a function of when people pay their tax, because it was moved back, but we need to make sure that it's an anomaly and an accounting thing, and we're going to get that money back. The other thing would be on the sales tax portion. The sales tax, I know, is month over month. And just so you know, you know, May looks like we were down over 18% from the previous May. And we, as a board, need to make sure that we're addressing this and making sure that we're on the same page, because there are going to be some changes that are going to have to be made. And I want to be a little proactive than reactive. And I think this report really sums it up. I want to thank you again for doing it, but I just had that question. If they could just explain the anomalies and the loss of 18% in sales tax and the 49%, is it part of the shelter in place? Is it part of the, you know, is this the new norm? I just would like that answered. Thank you.
And who wants to take that question?
This is Karen Hennessy. I cannot try and address that.
Very good.
You know, the local distribution of income tax, the amount fluctuates from month to month. If you look at year-to-date, for fiscal year 2019, we received $5.6 million. Year-to-date for 2020, it's $4.8. So the difference is $850,000. It's hard at this point to determine whether last year in May was maybe a makeup payment or there was something else going on. This income tax distribution is something that, you know, is constantly being poked at. So we will do a little bit more research and see if this is tied to the delay in the state income tax payments. And I apologize, Ray, I forgot what your other question was.
The other question appeared that we had over an 18% decline in month-over-month sales tax from 33521. And like you said, I'm not, you know, finger pointing or saying, you know, we got, I want to know what's going on. I just want to see if we start building a trend line that kind of shows the county board, all of a sudden is now going to have holes in the budget. I just want to, I'd rather know this kind of earlier than later, so we can make the necessary changes moving forward if there's going to be an issue.
Okay. Certainly, that's a great idea. We've been using percentages to estimate what we think could be a drop in sales tax, but we won't really see actual numbers until June. That's when we'll know what the March sales tax numbers are. I think the more information we have, if we go another month, maybe two months, maybe then we will have something that can project through the end of the year a little bit more accurately. And certainly, that information could be used to make some changes for this year and possibly even, you know, for the fiscal year 2021 budget, which is just starting now.
So essentially, what you're telling me is that when I'm looking at the May numbers, that's actually the receipts from February finally trickling down to the county?
Yes.
Oh, boy. Come here, I'm thinking 18%. It's the shelter in place. That means we had a loss of 18% in February, and we, once March, April, and May get here, this is going to be, could be potentially disastrous.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for all your answers. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next on our questioners' list is Rachel Ventura. Rachel, are you still with us? Rachel, unmute yourself.
It looks like she had to log off, but she posted a question in the chat.
Okay. Beth, do you want to take that?
Um, Annette, if you see it right there, I'm not, okay. Okay, it's for county clerk. Thank you, Chuck, for the clarification. It was very good. In normal years, when we send out the sample ballots, how is that selected who we send to? If all registered voters, can we also add the application to vote by mail or at least a letter, assuming these are sent in the appropriate timeline? I'm not sure if you might have already answered that, Chuck?
Yeah, I don't believe I did. I think she was referring to the voter information guides, and those are sent to every household with a registered voter. So, you know, so there's a lot of, you know, so every registered voter, for example, we have roughly 450,000 registered voters, give or take, here in Will County right now, but we don't send a voter information guide to every registered voter. We send it to the household. So that may go out somewhere around 210,000 or 230,000 voter information guides may go out. They're specified voter, they're personalized voter information guides that provide information specific to that particular household. Those go out, you know, the goal is to get those voter information guides out prior to or just right at the beginning of early voting, so that people have enough information to, you know, decide on who, you know, do their research and decide on who they're going to vote for. We have, we're also mandated this year, every two years, county clerks have to make a mass mailing of voter registration cards. That was scheduled for this summer. Initially, all things being normal, our plan was to, you know, provide those voter registration cards to every registered voter here in Will County. We had, you know, Lauren had put together a program where we streamlined the voter information card, made it smaller, reduced the mailing costs, and, you know, we were looking forward to significant savings on the voter registration card. And then came the mandate for, to send out the applications, the vote by mail applications. So what we've done there, and those have to go out, by the way, by August 1st, so sometime late this month or early next month, we are going to combine the mass mailing of voter registration cards and the applications for vote by mail ballots. We're going to put them into one ballot, so we don't have two separate, very costly mailings going out. We're going to put them all into one envelope that includes all of the state mandated instructional language as well. So I hope that answers the question. And by the way, combining those two mailings should save in excess of $110,000 in postage costs alone. Obviously, there are some, there's some prep work that we need to pay for with regard to our printing and mailing house, but again, the postage alone, combining those two mailings will save roughly $110,000.
Well done. Does that answer the question anymore? Oh, that's right, that was from Rachel. She's not here. Okay.
I have a follow-up to that. Sorry, I needed to jump in line, but Chuck, are there going to be any drop-off spots for ballots for people that aren't real confident about the US mail? And Lord knows why not, but are there going to be any drop-off spots?
Well, as it stands right now, our office right now is a drop-off spot. I think we need to talk about whether those ballots, and I need to look at the legislation again also, to determine whether our early voting locations would be a drop-off, could be a drop-off location for those vote by mail ballots. And also, too, just what the security issues might be with regard to that. But currently, our office, 8:30 to 4:30, and then expanded hours as we go into the weeks prior to, prior to the election, we're open till 7 o'clock. Our office is a drop-off location for vote by mail ballots. I think Lauren is rightly concerned, and we all are rightly concerned, with regard to allowing people to drop off, you know, the security with regard to allowing people to drop off their ballots into secured boxes. I mean, we've seen what's happened just in the last couple of days with regard to, you know, instability out on the streets. I don't know that anybody really trusts those ballots at this point in our timeframe here, whether that's really a good idea. But the bottom line is, we want to make it as easy as possible for people to return those ballots. Many people don't trust the US mail. They can drop it off at this point here at the county clerk's office, and we'll look at other options as well as time goes on.
Thank you, Chuck, for that follow-up. Last, I have listed.
Hold on. Can I, Mark, can I ask Chuck a question, kind of following up on what Jackie was just asking? This is Gloria.
Okay, Gloria.
I'm sorry. Chuck, I know a couple, maybe the last, a little bit, Jackie, at your last legislative meeting, you had somebody speak about stay-at-home, and there was tracking on the ballots. With this kind of, are we going to have any kind of tracking on ballots, so people can see, like if they drop it off at a voter's site, that then they do know that that ballot did get to the clerk's office? Any kind of tracking on a ballot, that we know where it is in the process? Thanks.
Yes, we do have tracking right now available, so, you know, people will know, people can track when a ballot's sent online, they can track when a ballot's sent, you know, when it arrives, and when it arrives back here at the, back here at our office as well, and when we received it. So we put that caution up once, you know, once the vote by mail ballots begin coming in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Next on the questioners' list is Mr. Steve Ballich. Steve, you got the floor, ask your question.
Yeah, I have a question about the voting. You know, if we're going to go back and automatically mail ballots out, how do we know those people actually still live there? And if the ballots aren't going to go to somebody else that moved in the house or to an empty house, then their ballots are picked up and thrown out by somebody illegally? And so we end up with a lot of voter fraud, because everyone's getting the ballot. How do we know who's actually getting them, and we're going to mail it to everybody? That's a lot of people. Lot of people got fed up in Illinois, and other people moved in. How do we know the right people are getting them? That's the first question.
Well, just to be clear, we are not mailing a ballot to every, you know, every registered voter in Will County. We're mailing, we're mailing applications to a large segment of the voters in Will County per the legislation. So they're getting the applications, they need to complete those applications, they can complete them, they can complete the ones that we send them and return them to our office via the mail, they can complete them online, or they can come to our office and complete an application for a vote by mail ballot. The vote by mail ballot can only be sent after the application is completed and received by our office, and it is sent to the house, it is sent by mail to the address that's requested by that voter. When the vote by mail ballots are returned, they are returned in sealed envelopes, and those sealed envelopes require the voter's signature. So, and we have, our election staff then does a comparison of that signature on the vote by mail envelope with the vote by, or with the signature that we have on file in our registration database. So these are the same security measures that are in place at a polling place or at a early voting site. It's the signature that determines whether a ballot is going to be counted. If, and the state has, you know, created a procedure for how we're, you know, to examine those signatures, but the bottom line is, there's also a procedure for if a ballot comes back and an election judge determines, or a team of election judges determine that that is not the signature that we have on file, there's a process where the voter, the voter is notified, and the voter then can contest or provide the information that's needed to get that vote counted. So it's safe, it's secure, you know, and, you know, we're doing everything that we can to make sure that, you know, we are, you know, protecting, you know, the integrity of this election.
I didn't quite understand. I understood what you said, that clarified real well. I had the wrong impression of what was happening. Another question I got is that we're not going to have third-party people going out and getting applications for people, other than saying that, give them somebody an application, they can fill it out and send it in. We're not getting the applications mailed to a third party instead of to the clerk, correct?
No, the clerk's office is not going to mail an application to a third party.
No, I meant the people that get it can't, like if my next-door neighbor says, I want an application, and he fills out the form, I can pass it on to the clerk or whatever, that's not a big deal.
Right.
I shouldn't be the one to collect it, right?
You can.
In other words, I don't want a third party collecting the applications. It should be, goes right to the clerk, you know, so if my neighbor wants to vote, you know, get the vote by mail, he can fill the form out, I can give the form to the clerk, and the clerk will mail the application. But he has to fill that back out, mail it in himself. He can't give it to me to mail in for.
Correct. People are supposed to fill out their own applications, and obviously, they're supposed to fill out their own ballots, and they're supposed to sign the sealed ballot envelope when they return that ballot.
And is there a new increased penalty for voter fraud? In other words, is it one of those things like, it's just like before, or is it something where now you're going to get maybe 20 years in jail or something? I mean, have they increased the consequences for voter fraud, or have they just left it the same?
This legislation, the legislation that requires us to mail out these applications contains no additional provisions with regard to voter fraud that I'm aware of, and I've been through the legislation.
Okay. That pretty much answered my questions. You know, it's new, so obviously, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about safety in it, but you seem to have a handle on it, which is good.
It's not, it's really not new, Steve. I think the only thing that's new right now is the volume that we anticipate. Because of COVID, we anticipated a lot of interest in the vote by mail program just because of the pandemic. And now we figure that, you know, we estimate we'll get even more from people who have received our vote by mail applications. But again, we're not mailing a ballot to everybody, we're mailing an application to everybody.
So it's pretty much what it was before. If they filled an application out, now if they throw an application out, they can't vote on Election Day, correct?
Correct.
So it's just like it was before. So anyone that asks for an application can't vote on Election Day?
No. Anyone who asks for a ballot, well, they can vote on Election Day if they haven't returned their ballot. They would, if they showed, if someone received a ballot, if someone received a ballot in the mail, they requested a ballot, received a ballot, and didn't vote that ballot, if they decided at the last minute they wanted to show up on Election Day and vote, you know, in person, they could do, there are a number, there are two options that could happen. One, they could surrender that unvoted ballot to the election judges on Election Day at their polling place, and they would be given a full ballot at their polling place, and they could vote that ballot. If they don't have the ballot, or if they can't surrender the ballot to the election judges on Election Day, no one's going to take a risk that they hadn't, that the ballot might have crossed in the mail. What they would do is, they would be given a provisional ballot, and after the, you know, and those would be counted or investigated and potentially counted at the provisional count. So if their vote by mail ballot arrived, the ballot that they voted, you know, on Election Day would not be counted, and the state board, you know, would have, you know, and we would have also some interest in, you know, what they were attempting to do as well. you know, and we would have also some interest uh, in, you know, what they were attempting to do as well and would take a look at that as far as, you know, any kind of potential for uh, intent to commit some kind of fraud.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, I have nobody remaining on the questions and hands are up from before, I think. Ray Tuminalo, is your hand up from before or do you have another question?
No, I'm good. I forgot to put my hand down. I'm a bad student.
That's okay. God forbid. Anyway, all right, that wraps up the questions unless anybody else has anything else. Um, the next.
A couple of their hands up, Mark, that I, I don't know if they're old or new. Jackie, your hand's still up. Now it's on Judy. O'Gala.
Hello?
Hi, I'm sorry, I, I'm back here now, sorry. This is Judy O'Gala.
Did you have your hand up Judy?
I did. Sorry, there's a baby in the background. I have a question. I'm not sure if Maggie's still there. If not, I just was wondering if we could get an update on um, when the families of the residents at Sunny Hill will be able to go back and visit because I haven't been able to be physically next to my dad since March twelfth. Um, you know, I just see a difference and I'm sure the residents do and I'm sure the staff notices because they're missing out on the interaction. All right, thanks.
Were you able to hear me?
Judy, we were. I see that Maggie is, she looks like she's still there. I think Maggie's on now.
Thank you, I'm on the mute.
Hello? This is Maggie. Can you hear me Judy?
Go ahead Maggie.
Good morning. Uh, just in response to that, I know that, you know, there is the five phases of reopening for the community and I've had a lot of calls and influx of calls from families likewise checking to see because they think that the opening up of nursing homes coincides with that five phased opening. However, CMS has outlined that nursing homes is going to follow a different strategy in terms of reopening. The um, guidelines are way more stringent in terms of um, there's a lot of very um, definitive prerequisites that have to be met in order for nursing homes understandably to open up. You know, we've been close to the public like you outlined since on or about March and obviously there has been no visitation. However, um, as I outlined earlier, one of the first steps that we have to take what I was talking about in terms of the uh, baseline testing that we're currently doing. Um, all nursing homes has to complete this um, survey and check and see what the status of all residents and staff are before they can even move into phase one. So that's what we are actually, is currently in progress here at Sunny Hill and that will be completed this afternoon. We anticipate having those results to turn around time forty eight to seventy two hours on or around Sunday or Monday. Now obviously we have a backup plan in terms of strategic staffing. In the event that we end up with a lot of our staff that end up being positive. Currently, I'm not anticipating that because as we've seen the curve uh, change in terms of the development of new cases, we're not seeing that. So I would have expected to see more positive cases developing um, with residents if we had a lot of staff that were positive. However, I won't know definitively until I get those results back, whether that's Sunday or Monday. So that's the first step. The next step actually would be that there is no positive, new positive cases within the facility for a period of twenty eight days. There are also a requirement in terms of making sure that we have adequate PPE, that we have adequate staffing, that our community, that there's not a whole lot of activity COVID wise in the community and that our hospitals nearby would actually be able to provide us with services if needed. So there is a number of different items that have, that we, um, and kind of stepping stones, milestones that we have to attain in order to be at a point where we could even consider reopening. And even then, you know, the department hasn't really shared with us what that would actually look like because I think one of the biggest struggles for nursing homes right now is actually even being able to complete the testing. Fortunately, we were lucky enough to have a contact at IDPH where we were able to get them to overnight us the three hundred and fifty test kits that we needed. You know, there's going to be a lot of nursing homes that's going to lag behind because they either don't have the test kits or they don't have the PPE supplies in order to be able to execute it once they do get them. So there's a lot of unanswered questions. Both our associations, the AHCA, the American um, uh, Healthcare Association and Leaving Age are both kind of vying and kind of trying to get clarification for us in regards to some of those other unanswered questions. But um, as of the weekend, you know, we will have fulfilled the first milestone that we need to kind of get us moving um, in the right direction. And of course, we continue to work with Will County Health Department and IDPH because they're the ones obviously giving the guidance in terms of uh, you know, how to execute this. So unfortunately, you know, I, I'm, I'm able to share what I know as of right now. But as I found out over the last couple of months, you know, these um, guidelines change um, on a day to day basis. Um, so that's where we're at currently. By tomorrow, some of this could have changed and maybe there'll be some new information. But that's something that, you know, when I do my weekly call with the families Judy, you know, I will be keeping everybody abreast of that because everybody kind of is waiting with bated breath to see, you know, when we can kind of curtail the, the window visits and uh, the uh, video visits and actually be able to see their loved ones in person. So we're all working, you know, towards the same goal.
Yeah, because it's so hard with like my dad. I mean, he doesn't, he's, you know him, he doesn't really talk a lot. So I'm one handed, you know, one question. I'm the one having all the communication and uh, you know, I usually just sit and watch TV with him and I understand the concerns for the COVID and everything. It's just uh, it's just hard not being able to be there. So, thank you Maggie.
Well, I totally understand that, you and all our other families because we're at a point where, you know, on the one hand, we have COVID nineteen, but on the other hand, because this has gone on for such an extended period of time, you know, you have the issues with depression, with heightened anxiety. Um, and you know, you wonder which is worse at this point because the longer this goes on, the more difficult it becomes for, you know, for the residents and for the families and understandably so.
Absolutely. I mean, I just know my dad looks like he's thinner and everything, but I know you guys are doing your best there. So thanks for the information. Appreciate it.
Thank you Judy.
Thanks Judy and thanks Maggie for following through on that. Are there any more questions for any of the department heads or um, countywide elected officials? Any more questions? I think uh, all the hands are down. Mark, do you see anybody? Beth, do you see anybody else?
I do not.
I do not either.
Okay, so let's move ahead in the agenda to item number three, record keeping for COVID nineteen related expenses. Who has that? Who doesn't?
We don't have anyone listed, Mark. Um, I, you know, if Denise or Nick um, prefers to talk about it, that's fine. If they're not available to talk about it, I'm happy to also um, give some guidance, but Nick, it looks like you just unmuted. So do you want to speak from your executive point of view?
I can just make a quick comment. I see Karen Hennessy's on too, but this is something we can probably need to talk at the cares committee tomorrow, but the um, concern that has been raised by several people to me and I've talked with um, several of the board members about is just a process going forward um, and how we, how the board would like to handle this is we've told people to tag stuff that's COVID related, COVID eligible, which we do have that in the New World system. And I saw a draft of the report. Um, but um, going forward, when we have to make decisions as a county to spend money on certain things that some may be clearly COVID related, but who's going to approve that or we, because it's not like this money's in individual departments budgets. Um, all this has to be, meet the regulations or we're responsible. If it doesn't, we're going to pay it back or we're going to be responsible for it. So just having some kind of guidelines and, and may, I don't know if it's the executives office or the electeds get an allotment, but somebody's got to be like a clearinghouse probably for this. I think that's what the point of that topic was, but um, so that may be something the committee wants to take up tomorrow. I don't know. And Karen wants to add something she's on too, so.
This is Ken Nick, but definitely we will be having it on the agenda tomorrow as a discussion. Uh, as how we should proceed with known stuff and immediate type expenditures.
I apologize Ken. I, I didn't see you on there, but yeah, Ken's the chair, so I, I should have deferred to you. My apologies.
I mean, an example is cleaning for buildings. I mean, we've authorized some of that through the execu- like some we couldn't wait. So like Sunny Hill, a long time ago, we cleaned there and expended that we authorized in the clerk's office, some of their election stuff that came back. Just, it wasn't a huge expense, but we just don't want all kinds of expenses to be made and then somebody to say, well, why was that authorized or, you know, was that the best use? But we've got money, but we still want to do it in a responsible, disciplined way, so.
Karen Hennessy.
Um, can I, can I just maybe ta- tag on to what, what Nick just mentioned?
Absolutely.
We, we set up the COVID project code for departments that had to make immediate purchases. We had to buy a um, mask, we had to buy hand sanitizer, we had to buy cleaning supplies. There is no question that those are COVID related. Um, what the committee will, will, one of the tasks they, they have in front of them is determine how to coordinate what the county needs to go forward. Um, if we need to support our tele, tele, work from home environment, that's going to involve departments letting us know what kind of equipment they need and the IT department letting us know what kind of licensing we might need. So that needs to be coordinated and again, there needs to be a, a, a determination of who's going to make a review of those items or pre-approve them. Um, again, we have the money, it's available to spend, but I don't think anyone wants to just tell departments to go out and buy whatever they want. So um, I, and we have some ideas about how to coordinate that and, you know, hopefully, hopefully we can have that discussion tomorrow.
And that's my plan, this is Ken. So yeah, definitely tomorrow we should be to get some action taken on how to proceed with, like I said, immediate needs.
Okay. That I, does that cover everything? Anybody else have anything to add to record keeping for COVID nineteen related expenses? Okay, let's move on in the agenda. Other new business? None so far. Uh, public comments? Beth?
We have no public comments, Mark.
No public comments, okay. I don't have a chairman's report.
I do have a couple of announcements if I could.
Sure.
Um, we did, we received an email today from uh, Bruce Freefeld, who was our former chief of staff and I just, um, I wanted to go ahead and read it since the majority of the board members are here. Just wanted you to know that I was saddened to hear of the passing of County Executive Walsh. Larry embodied the history of Democratic and Will County politics over the last forty years, which is a remarkable legacy. Please convey my condolences to Speaker Winfrey and all the board during this difficult time. You all remain in my thoughts. So that was from Bruce. And the other um, comment I wanted to make is I've sent an email. I know you guys get bombarded with emails from me and I know they get, they slip through the cracks. I sent the information for your NACO appointments. They're due by June fourteenth. I have received some responses from a few of you as far as uh, if you want to um, submit for an appointment or if you've already submitted your application. Could I please ask that you just shoot me an email and let me know what committee you have um, applied for or if you already have. If not, let me know and I can fill out the paperwork and get it sent uh, to ISACO. We'd like to try and get a handle on what everybody is looking for, for committees because that way we can make sure all the NACO committees are covered. Um, instead of having a whole bunch on one committee and that, and you know, and, and no one on any, on another one. Um, and the other issue is if we don't know what committee you've applied for, we can't help you in September when, you know, we try to check on it. So uh, we're trying to be a little proactive here. So I appreciate if you can just drop me an email or if you need the link again because um, if it's not a steering committee, I believe you have to fill out a form online. So uh,
I just. Form for all of them.
Well, there's a form to fill out that has to go through ISACO for the state association, but some of the uh, presidential appointments, oh, I'm sorry, the steering committees are the ones that have to be um, I don't know, there's, there's, there's two different ways to submit for an application. Please let me know if you have or if you need to and uh, I'll be happy to help you. You know, let me know if you have any questions on that then. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your information, Beth, and thanks for all your help with all those emails. I, it's like a marathon for you and every day she's got about eight or ten of them or more, just on the COVID. But anyway, is there a need for executive session?
Not that I'm aware of, Mark.
Okay. I uh, at that point, at this point, I can ask for a motion to adjourn?
Oh, bro.
Second Frisalone.
Okay, a motion and second was Brooks and Mr. Frisalone and um.
Do we need a roll call?
We have a previous roll.
Previous roll, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Moosus. And I almost did a handless check because I hadn't heard from you all meeting. I was wondering where you were. You surprised the heck out of me. You didn't have a question.
I, I, I can be a good listener too, Mark.
Yes, you can. All right. So all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
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 Oppose? I guess I was for the roll call, for the uh, previous roll.
If you guys could just monitor your email regarding any, you know, of the meetings coming up. That's how we'll probably be communicating. That's it.
All right. Well, somebody turn off the lights like they said at the first night game at Wrigley Field. And we'll see you all tomorrow.
Bye everyone.
Bye.